Waiting. Hang on.
Yes, there's one more, one more. We're expecting.
Irene should be joining us.
Oh, I see. Yes.
Irene is the one that's presenting from our, from the appeal group, from the appellate group.
I think we can start the meeting.
I see. Yeah. Okay.
Great. Well, welcome everyone to the Portola Valley Planning Commission meeting for August 3rd, 2022. I guess as usual, we'll start with a roll call.
Commissioner Haskell.
Present.
Commissioner Taylor will be absent this evening. Commissioner Targ. I do not see him present yet. Vice Chair Goulden.
Present.
And Chair Coffsill.
Present. Great, thanks. And so our agendized item is a hearing on the development at 1195 Westridge. But we always allow the public to comment on things that are not on the agenda. So in the oral communications. So if any attendees would like to comment not on that topic, on some other topic, go ahead and raise your hand. Or I see some phone numbers. What is it? Laura star nine on a phone?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, good. Let's see, I see Caroline Vertonghen has her hand up. So I'll call on her.
Good evening. Thank you so much. Can you hear me this time?
Yes.
Thank you so much. Um, I am still puzzled and I think a lot of residents are trying to find consistency in the guidelines. So one of the issues we had was, um, I'm still puzzled with the outcome for the Woodside Priory. And hopefully you can find, or you can give me some, um, some guidelines that would help me because I cannot, I have tried to get them from the planning department. So CEQA guidelines, 15314 exempt minor addition within existing school grounds. Where the addition does not increase the original student capacity by more than 25%. And so I'm wondering if. Can you hear me?
Yes, there was an echo for a minute, but now when you're talking, it's, it's okay.
Great. So when you were presented a report from the planning department.
Caroline, it might be because you're using your other device also. So if you're also tuning into the meeting on your phone, if you could mute whatever device you're not using.
I just want to let you know that when we use the phone, it says that are, we are unmuted, that we are muted. So if that's not the case, then let me know and then I will mute it using star six.
Sounds, uh, your current device you're talking on sounds okay right at the moment.
Okay, thank you. So you, you were giving the guidelines from the planning department that the original student enrollment was 350. But I hope you know that Woodside Priory had a CUP in 2004. And the maximum students at that time was 250. So I'm still trying to understand why the, um, the planning department used 350 as the baseline. They also say that it was, um, based on past practices, town practices and CEQA case law. And I was hoping that you have a report on those town practices that would set the precedent and also the CEQA case laws. That actually made the conclusion that 350 was the baseline. Thank you so much.
Okay, thanks Caroline. And you probably know, but let me say it for everybody in this oral communications, we can accept information, but we can't have a discussion or talk about it. So, um, we'll take that in.
Thank you.
Let's see, and next I see Rita's hand is up.
Hi, uh, thank you so much for hearing my comment. Uh, I've been looking through all the paperwork on the status of the housing element. You know, the newspaper says, oh, everything's been approved, but it seems in the meetings that I've been in, there was going to be a subcommittee about the opt-in or it, it just wasn't clear. So I was really surprised to see the article in the newspaper saying that it was all approved and it was moving forward. Is there a location where I can see the completed document that is going to be sent in since it wasn't very clear? In any of the last meetings, um, what the final packet was going to look like, since there were some open items that were to be sent? If there is a location or a link, uh, I'd be very happy, but I was surprised to see in the newspaper that it was all ago and it was moving forward because I spent a lot of hours in those meetings and perhaps I napped off at that moment. Thank you.
Great. Thanks Rita. Oh, and Laura, I see in our agenda, there's a staff report. You'll talk about the housing element then perhaps?
Um, through the chair, just very briefly right now, um, there's final, final revisions that are being made to the housing element right now. So cleanup of near typos in the final direction from the council subcommittee. That's going to be completed in the next couple of days and then, um, the document will be widely distributed to all of our lists and posted on the website and available, um, for everyone to view. So that should be the next couple of days.
Thanks Laura. Okay. So I see no more hands up from the participants. Oh, no. Oh. Oh, no, I do see, uh, Christie Corley, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I came a little late. If you talked about public comment on things that are not on the agenda item.
That's right. You barely, you snuck under, just under the wire. I was just about to close it, but you made it.
Thank you. Um, I'm wondering how the subcommittee is doing, uh, on the housing element. I don't think we've heard about the standards from the opt-in or the buffer or Glen Oaks. And I'm wondering if the staff can give us a report back on that, since it is a subcommittee. How will we get that information? And I'd appreciate the answer. Thank you.
Uh, darn Christie, you came, uh, you must've come just after Laura gave the answer. So, um, they're working on the details and it will be published soon. So you'll get.
Well, let's see, it's five minutes after seven. You can't answer me?
Well, we already, Christie, think of all the other people on the call. They just heard the answer. We would be doing that answer just for you, the person that came late.
I guess I have to listen to the tape again, huh?
Perfect. Uh, let me see any more attendees? No. Okay. Um, so we'll go on to our agenda item. And, um, I think this was in the report, but let me just tell everyone. Um, and especially for the public, what the order is, there's going to be a set order. So we're going to have staff presentation, then the commissioners are going to ask clarifying questions of the staff. Then there's going to be a presentation by the applicant, so the people filing the appeal. Hopefully 15 minutes, then the commissioners are going to ask the applicant questions. Then the applicant, the original person with the proposal for the house will give a presentation. Also hopefully only 15 minutes. Then the commissioners will ask the applicant questions. And then the public will make comments, neighbors and whoever. So that's letter G as in girl. Then there'll be closing remarks from the applicant, the people appealing, and then closing remarks from the applicant. Hopefully each of those three minutes, then the planning commission will do discussion and decision after that. Uh, so I guess I'll turn it over to staff for a presentation on the project.
Great. So, um, I'm sorry, Ralph Robinson is the planner for this. He's going to be giving the presentation. So we just wanted to make sure we have all of the parties present.
Good.
Uh, so I did get a message from, um, excuse me, from Irene. So she mentioned Pedro, maybe you mentioned Pedro maybe joining from a different location. So, um, I don't know if, can you chat maybe that, that email to, to me and Laura? The best email for Pedro, Irene?
Well, um, unfortunately, it's the same.
Okay.
You know, can you send a second link to the same email address or no?
Can he join with the same link or does that work?
Well, um, he can just join the meeting from the, just join the meeting from the link on the agenda and I can make him a panelist.
Okay, thank you. Um.
So I'm, I'm just looking for Pedro Ruiz. Is that, um, who I'm looking for?
Yeah, he, he understood that he couldn't use the same link. So he should go to, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. He should go, I have to let him know. So he should go to, to the link in the email, same one?
No, the agenda, on, on the agenda for tonight's meeting, there's a link to join the meeting.
Yeah, I'll put that in the chat right now.
In the chat. Okay. Wait, and I can send it to him? Can you just send it to our email?
Yeah, so that's, and that's.
I, I, I should have, I should have asked for, but not to make.
No, no problem.
We're, we're really backward here.
Okay, I just sent that link to your email there. So try that one.
Thank you. Thank you. I'll let him know. Okay. I will mute myself.
Thanks, everybody.
Okay, so we'll turn it over to Ralph for the presentation.
Thank you Laura. Uh, and thank you Anne. So, um, yes, so this evening we're discussing the appeal of an ASC decision approving an architecture review and site development permit for new residents at 1195 Westridge Drive. So Anne, just so I went over our meeting structure, but again, just to quickly recap it, recap that I'll be presenting followed by the applicants and then the applicants with each of those presentations fall for time for staff questions or excuse me, for commission questions, uh, followed by the public hearing. The project at 1195 Westridge is located, um, at the corner of Westridge, uh, Servantis and which up Mapachi Drives. So here we see 1195 Westridge outlined in that orange border, uh, with the applicants at 115 Meadowwood and 470 Servantis highlighted in green. So throughout the report, we make reference to kind of the, the downhill or the down slope neighbors, which would be 470 and 115 here. So the project does slope upwards towards the rear neighbor. And I believe that's 1185 Westridge and then down towards 470, 480 and then 115 Meadowwood. So what the applicants are proposing are new residents to replace an existing roughly 3,000 square foot, uh, single story residence. Now that existing residence, you can see outlined in red here on the plans, uh, slightly more forward on the property towards Servantis. And, uh, with the new location, the applicants will be locating a larger, uh, still single story residence with a mostly, uh, submerged basement of the small portion of that, that is daylight, um, kind of further back into the hillside. They're also proposing to add this detached garage, detached ADU. And now I'm sure the applicants will comment on this more in their application, but to accommodate these new structures, they're building a new driveway with this hammerhead turnaround, as you can see in the illustration here. And to bring that up into conformance with the fire district regulations, um, they had to somewhat widen that curve with the existing driveway. And build this larger parking area as well. Um, so they'll talk a bit about the impacts on that for how that informed the location of these structures. So what we're going to do now is we're going to go through kind of the plans as reviewed and approved by the ASCC. Um, I'll quickly note, the applicants did submit a new plan set at the end of last week, uh, which staff briefly had a chance to review. Now, should the planning commission uphold the ASCC decision? Those plans would then be reviewed by staff as well as two ASCC members per the conditions of approval, uh, that were initially approved. Those are included with the staff report, of course. So here we see the materials again as approved, but there's a new set of materials. I believe the applicant will also overview in their presentation. And we see here they're making use of, uh, stone materials, um, natural color palette while conforming to the town's reflectivity guidelines. Uh, the materials I believe are essentially unchanged, although there's some slight changes to the colors, uh, per a recommendation of the ACC, which we will get into in just a moment as well. And here we see the, um, elevations for the proposed house. So when you come up the driveway, this is kind of the view looking, uh, kind of behind here would be the 115 Meadowwood property. So here we have the main residence, uh, parking area, trash enclosure, et cetera. And then here would be the view of the house, um, excuse me, kind of looking from that rear porch, excuse me. Yeah, from the front portion of the house. So standing again with your back to Servantis and so kind of to the right here would be our pool location and then to the left is our parking area. And then here again is standing on the east side. So looking towards the driveway and Westridge Road. And then here is our back view again with your back towards that rear neighbor at 1185 Westridge. Now again, there have been some revisions to the plans since this was reviewed by ACC. Uh, this is the set again though, that was approved, um, at that May 23rd meeting. The applicant will get into a bit more, but when you look here at the south elevation on the left side, there have been some reductions to the plate heights, kind of along the left side of this illustration here. To kind of reduce that visual impact to the downhill neighbors at 470 Servantis and 115 Meadowwood. Um, again, I believe, uh, Stuart and Mark are going to take us through that in more detail. And here are elevations for proposed accessory buildings. So here we have standing in the driveway looking towards Westridge, we see the ADU on the left and the garage on the right. And then we have our front elevations for both our garage, uh, this left bottom image and then our ADU, this bottom right image as well. So at the May 23rd ASCC meeting, uh, the commission was generally supportive of the project and approved the plans as is, and as we've just, uh, briefly overviewed. They did however, add an additional condition of approval for the applicant to consider. This was motivated by a comment that was submitted prior to that meeting by Irene Ruiz, who was one of our applicants, of course. Um, and she also spoke to this comment further during the public comment portion of the May 23rd meeting. And her comment was concerning essentially the visual impact of the new structure, especially its situation higher up on the hill. Um, and that visual impact again to her from her backyard as well as from kind of her main living area. So considering that comment, the ACC suggested the applicant consider, uh, doing one of these three things or some combination of these three things. The first either being a reduction in the height of the structure by reducing the plate heights, the basement of the levels. The second potentially revising the colors used. Um, now we saw a bit earlier, the kind of proposed color palette. The commission commented that the palette, while in conformance with the requirements, was a bit dark, which causes it to stand out somewhat from, I believe the phrase used was a, a kind of warm, you know, natural color template that exists currently. So they suggested kind of warming those colors up a bit to blend a little more seamlessly into the natural terrain. Our consideration was perhaps adding some additional landscape screening, uh, to further shield the structure itself from both 115 Meadowwood and 470 Servantis, uh, suggestion that they work with those neighbors to come up with a screening plan. That would be adequate for everyone involved. But apart from that, again, these were kind of additional considerations for the applicant to pursue, uh, not necessarily required. Uh, but the project was approved by a vote of four to zero. There was one commissioner absent. And any changes to the plans, it was included in the conditions of approval at those changes to be reviewed by both staff as well as two members of the ACC. So following that decision, uh, this was appealed by both 115 Meadowwood and 470 Servantis. Those are the reasons, Ruizes and the Hennefarce who are on our call tonight. Uh, and within their appeal materials, which are all included within the staff report, there's attachment 6A through 6J, I want to say perhaps. Uh, the first being that the project fails to comply with the Portola Valley general plan. Second being that it fails to comply with the zoning code. Third, that it fails to comply with the design guidelines. And fourth, they also mentioned some myriad concerns related to building mass, location, lighting, impacts the wildlife, drainage, et cetera. Which again, we will also review here a bit further. So first concerning the conformance to the general plan. So in the ASCC discussion, Josh Grant's only back up a little bit more. Uh, in the general plan, land use element sections 1010, 2103 and 2104, uh, there's a lot of phrasing to the effect of, you know, preserving the overall atmosphere, uh, preserving the present character of residential neighborhoods. Uh, that new building should minimize disturbance to the terrain, that there should be minimal grading, uh, with an overall view towards preventing adverse impacts from new construction and making sure buildings are subservient, subservient, excuse me, to the existing natural setting. So within that conversation during the ASCC meeting, uh, it was found that this meet, that the proposed structures do integrate into the surroundings and the location of them is appropriate for the, um, for the lot. The uses are concentrated kind of around that central parking area, as we saw on the site plan, which minimized disturbance overall to the natural terrain. The graining, uh, proposed is what is minimally needed to accommodate the structures. Uh, overall, so ASCC found that this, this project maintains the natural beauty, um, of the site. And as in keeping with the existing development in the residential area. And lastly, uh, their comments made by the commissioner and reading to the effect that they found that while there are some impacts to neighboring residences with respect again to those, you know, the visibility of the residents, uh, they found that the applicants did make, uh, take reasonable measures to reduce those impacts through careful use of, uh, whether it's limited use of lighting, uh, proposing landscaping, um, there's minimal fencing as well, which, or excuse me, there's no new fencing, which we'll get into a bit further. Now regarding the zoning code requirements, so there are nine required findings in section 1848 060 of the Portola Valley municipal code. We'll just briefly go through a few of those. So, and first to the effect that there's again, similar to the general plan, minimal disturbance to the natural terrain. Uh, and again, the commission finding that this project does centrally locate the structures and reduce the overall, uh, effects on the natural terrain. Another one is to the effect that again, that this allows adequate light and air, both for this building as well as for the neighbors. The project does meet all required setbacks and complies with our maximized requirements for the zoning district. And again, while that commenter was that comment submitted by 115 Meadowwood and discussed to the effect that again, there are some impacts visually. Overall, the commission thought again, there was some thoughtful consideration taken by this project to mitigate those. I don't know, the zoning code also discusses landscaping, um, the use of that to assist in screening the site. The commission did find that both the proposed landscaping as well as the situation of the new structure helps to screen much of the proposed structures from both the right ways and neighboring properties. Um, in particular, there are minimal visual impacts and in fact, fewer visual impacts to the right of way from this proposed project. Uh, minimal impacts on the neighbor at 1185. So that's that neighbor. It's kind of to the north there along Westridge as well as for the neighbors across the street. Um, and while there are again, more impacts on those kind of downhill neighbors at 470 Servantis and 115 Meadowwood. Uh, overall, there was again, careful consideration, both the landscaping and the situation of the structures to try to minimize those impacts. And again, the zoning code similar toward general plan also talks a bit about grading and reducing that to the necessary, which again, the commission found for this project, uh, to be the case. Now, most critically, uh, within the applicants materials and as well as our staff report here in our presentation tonight. We're going to talk a bit more about the design guidelines, um, and especially with respect to site design and those subsections of view preservation and ridge lines and hilltops. I'll just briefly run through our architectural design and landscape design sections. So we see kind of a, a brief listing of what those, uh, considerations are of both of those categories. These were all overviewed and discussed during the commission meeting, but again, the commission finding that whether it's concerning lighting, whether it's concerning the overall, uh, materials used, whether it's considering the overall size and location of the building. Those were all found to be, uh, both appropriate to the site as well as in conformance with our design guideline standards. And concerning the landscape design, the proposed landscaping, um, was overall con focused, you may constrain to where the buildings themselves were. So there was not a lot of landscaping beyond the building footprints. Um, and also that the plants and materials being used, uh, were from the native plant list provided by our conservation committee. And they also like that there is kind of no new fence proposed. So minimal impacts as far as the aggressive, uh, wildlife around the property. Now I do want to spend a bit more time on the site reservation in the hillside ridge top sections here. So here we see the, this is taken directly from the design guidelines and these are the standards listed as far as considering those visual impacts. So briefly run through those there, minimizing adversity visual impacts, maximizing open space preservation, protecting view corridors, preventing the obstruction of views and considering the future height of trees, um, to not create instructions to use in the future. And then here again, we're directly from our design guidelines, it's the section on ridge lines and hilltops. So mentions avoiding citing structures on ridge lines and hilltops, uh, minimizing removal of tree masses, minimizing offsite visual impacts. And keeping roof lines, most critically perhaps, keeping roof lines of structures below the height of the tree canopy. And also lastly, mentions integrating the construction within the natural context. So after considering the design guidelines and considering the project overall, uh, first off, the proposed structures are not located on the top of the hillside. And in fact, the top of them does not exceed the top of the hillside. So if you've been to the site, you'll notice that that, uh, this slope of the hill continues up, uh, to that neighboring property at 1185 Westridge. So the structures themselves are located below the top of that ridge line. Um, again, the grain results overall in a project that steps somewhat naturally with the hillside and is integrated into the natural terrain. The overall design is conscientious of its impact. Again, we mentioned that, but it was commented by, uh, by the commissioners that there is a overall conscientiousness with this project to reduce those impacts. And also that it makes appropriate accommodations for the currently increased visual impact to 115 Meadowwood and 470 Servantis. Through the limited use of outdoor lighting, the current selection materials and the design of the structure overall and the landscape screening. With that addition load, of course, that was included, the condition approval that the applicant further considering again, either reducing the height of the structure, changing those colors being used, um, or incorporating additional landscapes treating to further limit those visual impacts. Um, but again, overall, after considering the design guidelines themselves, considering the project, this was all found to be in line with what is called for by the design guidelines. Now there are some other, some myriad other concerns that were raised by the applicants, uh, in their, um, comment letters that were submitted. So one being drainage and the concern about the additional water flowing downhill, uh, in particular on the 470 Servantis. So of course, as part of this project and any construction project in town, um, there are mitigation measures that are put in place and requirements put in place by the town to ensure that there is not a condition where we are increasing the amount of water runoff from one property onto another. I'd also mentioned is lighting. Now, there's a letter, but there is one letter submitted and it's the last attachment, I believe, uh, the last of the numbers, I think it's 6F within the staff report, uh, that mentions perhaps studying, well, what are the impacts of light spill from the windows on a residence onto the neighboring properties? Now, while that issue itself was not closely discussed by the commission, um, the applicant, and again, I'll touch on this presentation has since then actually revised those windows, uh, to remove one of the larger windows and also reduce the size of another window with this thought in mind of reducing the light impacts. The outdoor lighting was also found to be, uh, appropriate to the site, uh, and in line with our zoning code and design guidelines. Now the applicant's letter also, excuse me, the applicant's letters, probably going to mix those up a few more times. Also mentioned, uh, potential impacts to wildlife, uh, that currently, you know, wildlife uses to traverse through the property. So while of course we have a larger structure, there's no fencing being added to the property. So staff finds that again, uh, staff and the commission finds there's not going to be any negative impacts there. A couple of other quick things I'll go through. So landscaping. While the current plan is to concentrate the landscaping around the structures, the, um, ACC did recommend that they consider, uh, working with the neighbors to provide additional screening. Now there were concerns again raised by the applicants concerning the previously proposed screening and again, whether the new screening would be appropriate to the site. But we will let again, each of them kind of overcap their concerns as well as maybe what the applicants done since then to address, uh, that issue. There's also some comments, uh, both by the applicants and some of the public comments received, uh, just kind of the general review process. That's, you know, 1195 and now our applicants have gone through. So I do just want to reiterate that, of course, all the necessary procedures for a project review were followed, you know, staff review by planning, um, and all our, you know, related departments. Um, there was of course the necessary public noticing from the ASCC meetings, uh, the storage pool installation. And of course, all the requisite requirements for the public hearing itself were followed for both the ASCC meeting as well as the planning commission meeting. So we have this very well, uh, you know, numerator process that I think we're seeing in action here tonight. So I did just want to, uh, reiterate that. So as I mentioned earlier, the applicant team did submit some revised plans, uh, late last week. Um, touching on these three items that were kind of the focus of the, the ASCC discussion relating to the height surmassing of the structure. Uh, the colors being used as well as proposed landscape screening. Um, again, those plans were provided as part of the meeting materials. I'm not sure if the measures had a chance to get too closely into them, but also going to counter our applicants, hopefully take us in that, look through that a bit more in detail tonight. And just noting that any of those changes will also have to be reviewed, go through the full review process with staff. And just noting that any of those changes will also have to be reviewed, go through the full review process with staff as all the two members of the ACC. So received a number of public comments on this item submitted by both the applicants and the applicants as well as received directly via email to the town. So those are all compiled with an attachment date. Now there were a few comments that were added. To start this week, we had one from Chrissy Fleming, Dana Breen and one additional comment from George Savage. So those were all provided to the planning commissioners. We also provided, of course, the reference notice for all properties within three hundred feet for this hearing and the notice itself was posted at the project site. There have not been additional comments since the last comment I sent to the commission again from Hannah Reen, Chrissy Fleming and George Savage. I'd be happy to overview those if you think it necessary, but those are all attached within the staff report and included with our supplemental materials. So our recommendations tonight. As we noted, the ACC approved this project by afforded nothing but on May twenty third, finding that it conforms to the general plan, zoning code and the design guidelines. We're recommending the planning commission deny this appeal and uphold that May twenty third decision by the ACC to approve both the architecture review inside development permits. However, the planning commission can either take that recommendation and deny the appeal and uphold the approval. You could also deny the appeal and uphold the approval with additional conditions to be added. Thirdly, you could approve the appeal and rescind those approvals, in which case we would remain back to the ACC for additional consideration. And then fourth would be the option to continue this to a future meeting if you deem it necessary. So that is my staff presentation on this. My time to any questions from the commission and thank you.
Great. Thank you, Ralph. So I'll look to my fellow commissioners to ask any questions you have. Start with who's on top. How about you Judith?
Sure. Um, so these are a little random in order here. Some of it relates to how this process works relative to standard processes. And some of it is merely definitional. So for example, please define a plate height.
Yes. So plate height generally being from grade to kind of that. The roof being the roof plate where you have kind of that, you imagine the wall going up and then we have our, you know, bit jumping out here. So that is our our plate height. Or it's kind of our room height in another way of defining. Stuart might have a more technical architectural definition for me. Right. So not being to the the maximum height necessarily, right? So probably more, probably more useful in these settings to talk about our overall maximum heights and our vertical heights. So vertical height kind of being. The height you see at any one location and the maximum being considering the lowest point of the structure to the highest point. Those are probably the more useful overall terms to consider. Now, is your question getting to as far as what the revisions, has that changed the maximum heights at all? Or is that what's kind of here?
I didn't see a definition in the materials and because one of the ACC members actually recommended a reduction in plate height, I didn't know what he was asking for. So that's.
Okay, yeah, well, I can definitely provide more background on that. So those within chair Ross's comments. So he made the comment of the effect that the. Plate height or effectively the the room heights for both the basement and that main floor. I think it was ten feet for essentially that remind for the basement and fourteen feet for the main floor. So his comments, the effect that those seemed. Fairly generous for those two rooms. So if there could be some accommodation to. Lower the basement somewhat as well as that top floor, you know, whether it's by a few inches for the basement and a couple of feet for the top floor or some combination therein. On the lack of overall result in a overall reduction in the height for the impacted area. Of, you know, several feet, which could be of a help for reducing those impacts.
Okay. And then in terms of defining a ridge line versus the hillside, because we ripple, we don't just have a, you know. A triangular topography here. Is there guidance in our guidelines or anywhere on what a ridge line is and what the hillside is?
Those are items that are subject to interpretation by the decision making body. So the design guidelines give the diagrams and the language is guidance, but it's up to you to interpret.
Okay. A little bit on procedure, the ASCC, some of your materials that you just. Presented said that findings were made, but when I read the ASCC minutes. It's not a formal finding of all of the criteria, right? I didn't see it. Please point it out if it's fair. So was it the staff that made the findings or was it the ASCC and how formal is it typically?
Yeah, so I can speak to this specific process or if you want to just give the general.
Yeah, let me speak to the big picture first, Ralph. So in general, staff will prepare draft findings for the ASCC to review. Similar to what we do for the planning commission. And then different ASCC members have different kind of style. Some of them will expressly say, I agree with the findings. But when they make the motion, it's usually included either expressly or implied that it's the findings that are in the staff report. Or they will give us other rationale to include in the final findings.
Okay, more on procedure. Are we even entitled tonight legally to consider the revised plans since they have not been approved? Or how do we, what's our role vis a vis the updated plans that the applicant has submitted between the appeal and now?
Let me try and then I'll have Cara add on to that. Our staff understanding is that the applicant is trying to demonstrate. Compliance with the ASCC's approval and trying to make further improvement to the plans that more people might find them to be acceptable. According to those, the approval, the ASCC, two members of the ASCC would still need to review those plans. And so the planning commission can take it as an indication of the direction that the applicant is going and the way that they're thinking about their design. And the planning commission is allowed to look at this application sort of with fresh eyes. And so you can take those revised plans into consideration in the way that you think is appropriate. Cara, would anything to add to that?
I don't that that was. Perfect, Laura. I think.
Okay. And and isn't normal for the ASCC to have as a condition, the obligation to consider. As opposed to the obligation to do, how common is that? Because an obligation to consider. When. Dave Ross was making his comments. It didn't seem that it was clear to me what they really intended and either maybe people who were in the room have a better interpretation of the intent. But what what did the ASCC intend? Do we know? Or is there any more than is in the record?
It is fairly common for the ASCC to ask applicants to consider things. And they're usually specific whether they want them to be conditions or not. And so when the ASCC asks for something to be considered, what we're looking for at a staff level is for the applicant to analyze those items. And normally they supply back to us some kind of narrative or email or plans or or diagrams or descriptions about how they have considered them. And that goes through staff review first with my oversight. And then we'd review it with the two ASCC members to make sure that they agree that the applicant has duly considered. So they're not obligated to implement, but they are obligated to consider and provide rationale.
Okay, I only have a couple more. Uh, there was commentary in some of the submissions about. This process being different and maybe shortened in terms of the. Appellants ability. To have a chance to understand the. The the plans for the house and 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 the layout of the the house is proposed. I don't know if you want to comment, if it's appropriate to comment on. The a preliminary review under the quote old regime. I'm a little confused because I'm not on the ASCC. What would have happened previously versus now? Because one of the things we're seeing is. You know, the story polls came up and people were surprised. So I'm trying to understand. What might have happened in another under the old framework, if that's an appropriate thing to ask.
I think that it is an appropriate thing to ask. The ASCC. Has been exploring some different things in terms of how they approach some of these applications. So in the four years that I've been here. New projects can either go through a preliminary review and a final review, or they can go to a one time ASCC review. That started before I got here. And so if there's a lot of neighborhood comments that we've already heard, or there's a lot of complexity to the project. I will sometimes make the judgment that the applicant has to go to a preliminary review. But if the project at the time, what's information that's available to us seems relatively routine, then we'll make the decision to take it. To ASCC prepared as a final review. The ASCC always has the discretion to say, we'd like to treat this as a preliminary review and give you feedback. So it's just a matter of whether staff has prepared it with the findings and draft conditions of approval. So they, you know, sometimes they do something different than what we staff expected. Sometimes they want to approve something in only one time. And sometimes they need two or even more times to review it. So we defer to them on that judgment.
Okay, did? If it's not going to have the two step review, do you normally go to the site? Does the planning staff go to the site and have a look from all the perspectives or? Was that done? I don't even know here.
Generally speaking, we do go to the site and try to view it from different perspectives. Ralph, did you want to speak to this particular project?
Yes, no. So I did do a site visit. Now, it was prior to the story polls and I was doing kind of the preliminary staff review of all this. So and did you know kind of your wasn't able to get onto the property, but kind of from the street level got a sense. So. Do not get all the perspectives as you mentioned, but to make an effort to get out there to get a sense of the the context of this.
Okay, okay. All right. And then the last question I have on is is. The. When? Is there a typical timeframe where the neighbors have access to the plans relative to the story polls? I don't, I'm the timeline and that. Is a little unclear to me. What's what's normal or what's? Standard practice.
So we ask applicants to do outreach to their neighbors themselves. And then what the town does is we provide notice the ten days before the ASCC meeting. And then the plans are available anytime in the process for applicants to review. So if an applicant reaches out to us at any point. We'll share the plans. The plans are all digital. Now, we we just get a few paper plans. So normally if someone wanted to see something, we can share that electronically or sometimes still people come in and look at a paper set of plans.
Okay, all right. Thank you. And sorry to take so long. Those are my questions.
No, no, all good questions and cover some of the ones I had. So. Efficient, actually. Let's see, Nicholas, do you have any additional questions? Well, you're muted if you're talking. You're there. Yeah, we heard you for a second, even though the mute button looked on. No. Still no. Oh, and we see you waving.
And his mute button went away, but.
Yeah. How about if I go to John Golden for questions and then see if something changes on your end? Okay. How about you, John?
Yeah. So as usual, as you noted, Judith asked great several of my questions. I did have two questions, I think. One's kind of nitty gritty, which is in terms of the. Driveway and the slope. Did and the new requirements for our fire access, did it have, did that have anything to do with where? The prop, the the building is located on the property. I mean, did that push it up or or is it that just a different choice? That may be a question for the architect also, Ralph. I understand that. And then the second question was really about, again, on the process. Who is it that sets the ASCC process? Does that something that they would do themselves? Is it the town council? Is it within our purview to tell them what their process should be? How does, how do we, how do we integrate with them on that topic?
Okay, so first on the fire access, yes, it is staff's understanding that that had a meaningful impact on their site planning exercise. And the applicant team can speak to that later on. In terms of the ASCC process, it's set between staff and the chair of the ASCC. And then sometimes the council liaison to the ASCC. So for example, we were doing some work with the ASCC. To do very early reviews before the plans were completed to do some trials on that to see how that worked for some projects that had big decisions. That they need to make before finishing their plans. We did a couple of those. Where they had a very early review, they still had a two step review, but it was earlier in the process. Most of the time, the projects that the ASCC reviews are what we would call a complete set of plans. Architectural, civil, survey and landscaping are all present so that they can evaluate the project on the whole. And whether they review it once or twice is the process I was describing earlier. It starts with the staff basis and then it's up to the ASCC if they want to see it multiple times. And in terms of coordination, I'm certainly happy to hear feedback from the planning commission. On, you know, the review of these types of projects and so much as it, you know, impacts decisions that fall within this body. Within your authority and further any recommendations that you have when you act as liaisons. To the ASCC and then we would take those to probably we would take them to a meeting of the mayor and the chairs of the planning commission and the ASCC. That's the, we don't convene that group very often, but every once in a while we do to go over those types of process questions. But from staff's point of view, the process for this project has been consistent with our standard process.
Thank you.
Any others, John? Questions?
No, that's it.
Okay, good. Can we try Nicholas again? Or no? Okay, no. Okay, you could quickly. Would he be allowed to text one of us a question that he wants to ask and we could ask him?
How about a phone call? I mean, can he phone in?
Or are you okay? Do you have no more questions? Let me ask my question and then we'll see if you have any left more. I have just one question. Ralph, the notice gets sent to the neighbors three hundred feet radius like usual. Does an additional notice get sent when there's going to be an appeal?
Yes.
I see. So neighbors got two notices, can I say? They they knew this was coming up if they wanted to. Okay. Okay.
Okay, oh, good. Through the chair, I just wanted to say to Commissioner Targ, if you want to call in separately to the call in number, I can make your phone number a panelist also. That's the other choice, or you can log off and log back on and see if that helps. We we do have a forum. So if you need to drop off for a minute and come back, that would be okay too.
Okay. All right. So next on our plan is the presentation by the appeline. So I think that's Irene and Pedro Ruiz. We're hoping this is around fifteen minutes, but. It's their time to give their story. So go ahead.
Okay, so. Let me see if I can, I I'll be speaking on behalf of. Ourselves, also the Hena Farts. Okay, I'm quite nervous. I don't do this. So yeah, thank you so much. We really appreciate your time. We know you do this just for the good of our town. And we are really grateful and. We do appreciate all of this, especially during this time when you're quite occupied with other issues. Okay, so. To make it easy. I'm going to, well, relatively, I'm going to try to do a. Like a slideshow and I I I put, I think we summarize most of the information in the. In our appeals, so I'm kind of just. Putting, wait a minute, did I share my screen? No.
Not yet.
Sorry. Not yet. Okay, I'm getting there. I'm figuring figuring this out. So. So I I won't take too much of your time, but we did. Put together a summary in. In this way. Okay, so let me start. Oh, let me get to the beginning, sorry. So here's our. Okay, now is it working?
Yes, we can see your slides now.
Okay.
You might make them full screen if possible.
Yes, I need to make it full, full screen, and I just have to see where that button is. I was supposed to know how to do this.
It's okay if the way it is right now is also okay.
Fine.
You're doing great.
You are. Irene, make sure you hit view on the view to just.
Yeah, but.
There you go.
Live show. There it is. That's that's how it works. Okay, now it worked. Now it's right.
Very good.
Okay, so. Here's our appeal and. Essentially, our assertion is as follows. We believe that the placement. Of this house is contrary to many of the town design guidelines and to the direction of the general plan. Specifically, we feel that the proposed plan fails to consider. Views from neighboring properties, that would be ours, as well as the Hennefarts. Um, the design relationship to the adjacent parcels. The protection of view corridors to maintain views of prominent scenic features. The avoidance of siding structures on ridges or hilltops. And ensuring careful integration into the already developed area, so as to ensure compatibility. So. I I I won't belabor this. These are the main points of both the general plan. And more from the general plan that we feel was overlooked. Also from the design guidelines regarding view preservation, open space preservation, view corridors, obstruction of views. Let's see, our theme. Location on hilltops or ridge lines. And and then also the scale and context. It is quite a large structure, and so of course it has more impact than the existing one, but significantly more, so. You know, there there is the issue of designing structures in proportion. And that keeping them sighted and unobtrusive, subordinate to the landscape. Okay, so. A couple of visuals to emphasize. So I know you already had photos from our property, also from the Hennefarts property. You don't need more photos. And a couple of you came to actually see it from our property. And from the Hennefarts, and I appreciate that because we do feel that the effect is really only. Remarkable from our home. The photos don't quite do it justice. So in this diagram, we're just showing the where the existing structure is compared to the old one. I mean, compared to the new one. So you can see that it it really has moved significantly from the existing site. In in this. In this slide, you see sort of where our property and sightline is and the Hennefarts sightline, so. We have this, sorry, it's very annoying. We have this open space. Uphill. And you can see where the existing house is. And this is where the proposed house will be, or it is slated to be. Hopefully. So this is really what what we are concerned with. So it's essentially the reasons for our appeal are the sort of what we feel is. Failure to adhere to the design guidelines as outlined previously. And and then. There is the issue of the lack of communication. We really were taken by surprise when the story polls went up and and. We've, we've been in this town a long time and we've done some minor remodels and, but we have many friends who've done. New builds and major remodels, and there was always quite a lot of. Dialogue and interaction with the neighbors because this is a town where we all try to. Be good neighbors, and so everyone is quite motivated to to keep good relationships by by accommodating. And so it, we just feel like the whole process was skipped in this case. You know. So that that is an issue and it is also kind of covered quite thoroughly in our appeal. So. To conclude, I promise it would be short. Essentially, our appeal request is that the planning commission would send project back to ASCC reconsideration. With the recommendation to strongly or more strongly adhere to the guidelines regarding siding of the structure. We, you know, with the points that we have already made. So. I I don't believe I have much more to say, except thank you for your time and your consideration. Yeah.
Thank you, Irene. Good, so next we'll bring it back to the commission for questions for Irene Ruiz. So let me see. Who wants to go first? Shall I start with John this time? Just a minute, Irene, what's the procedure? Should Irene stop sharing her screen so we can see the people a little bigger?
Yeah, that's recommended.
Yeah, thanks.
Okay, perfect. Great. Sorry, go ahead, John.
Yeah, so my main question. So right at the very end there, you said. Would it make sense to go back to the ASCC? And at this point in time. Do you think that would help? Um, I I'm just, I mean, I I'm reading all the notes. Obviously. Things are not, have not gone particularly well. Neighbor to neighbor here, and I'm just wondering if we were to do that, would it actually result in any change? Or? I'm just really, I know, but kind of my rough question there. What what do you think?
Oh, actually, to to be honest with you, you're absolutely right and. I I don't know. It it just, I think our understanding was those are one of the choice, those were one of the four choices and the only one that was really appealing to us. Right, because the other three are all that it gets approved with maybe some. Right, it was the only choice that. Wasn't, okay, let them go ahead and build it. So. You're absolutely right, and this is pretty much how it's been going from the beginning, you know, when the ASCC approved it. It took us a few days to even learn that we could appeal. So like, we've just been sort of. Clawing around in the dark, so you're absolutely right, and I don't know how to answer that. Yeah, but thank you.
Thank you.
I guess I'll go to Judith. I'm still worried about Nicholas. How do you?
I think Nicholas is okay.
Oh, yay, why don't you go next then?
Guys, first, just to clear up the first portion. Judith, as always, did a excellent job of clearing the deck. Uh, so, uh, thank you both for your patience and thank you. Commissioner Hasko for your thoughtful questions. The. The questions that I have, I I think, I think you're you're you're. And the 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 point is is really good one, and that is if we go back to. The ASC. Uh, do we move the ball forward or is it another stop in order to come back here, which is? Not inviting for anybody or good use of anybody's time or resources, including ours. Uh, have you had an opportunity to meet and to discuss? With the applicant following the revisions to the to the plan?
Um, so you mean that the revisions that were submitted on Friday?
That's right.
Um, yeah, no, no, we have not spoken with them.
Have you had an opportunity to review them?
Yes.
And.
So, um, yeah.
And perhaps we we will have an opportunity. Plant, there you are, Laura. In in terms of process, we'll have an opportunity to hear from the project proponent. It would be, I perhaps. Useful to. To understand the the response from the. Appellant. Following. The presentation. Will we have that kind of opportunity? Or is this the appropriate time to query what the response is?
You can ask questions now, but both the appellant and the applicant will have a brief chance to speak after public comments. So to kind of give any kind of closing remarks. And so that would be another time when when either party will be able to speak.
Interesting. Now, it's a it's a challenging process to have an appeal with new plans on the on the table. So a different kind of decision-making process might be. Better positioned here. But have that being the case. This really is so, so in reviewing the. The applicant's. Revisions, can you respond to this?
So. We appreciate that. The effort to accommodate and the the issue of the plate heights did come up in the ASCC meeting. It's very hard to describe. This is why we were so anxious that, you know. Earlier that it would have been the ASCC now that the commissioners would come and view the site. The the issue is that. Currently, when we are in our kitchen or family room, you know, dining room. And we look out the window, we have an open hill. So whether you put a 20-foot-high structure on it, 24-foot-high structure on it, or a 16-foot structure on it. It doesn't change. I mean. It changes the height of the structure that's there, but. Now there is a structure there and. It's, it changes completely. The visual. And quite frankly, that hillside is is a pretty significant visual from our house. It's, you know, in the last two months, while the story polls have been up there, almost everybody who walks into our house notices it within a few minutes. And comments on it. So it's not something we have to point out. It's not something that we have to go look at. It is, it is a very prominent sighting from. Every central location in our house, from our back patio, and I'm not talking about like walking to our backyard or some corner of our backyard to see it. It is ever-present. I will never walk from my garage to the kitchen or to my bedroom and not see it. So whether it's 16 feet high or 20, it doesn't significantly alter. The reality that there will now be a massive structure up there instead of open space. So I, you know, I, I know that the applicant is trying to be accommodating. But nevertheless, it doesn't, it's, I don't know, I I don't know, just say it doesn't really change it.
That's helpful. I appreciate that. Thank you very much. And by the way, you're doing a great job. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Judith, do you have any questions for the appeline?
And just a couple. Between, so it seems to me, and and I want you to comment, tell me if this is wrong. You got to notice that there would be building or or a project going on in, I think, January. And then. The story polls went up in May. What? What was, is that accurate? I mean, step one, that that is accurate. And did you know that you could get access to plans? What was your awareness of, you know, your relationship to this project between January and May when the story polls went up? Because if I interpret correctly your statements, you felt that you had 10 days. To kind of get your bearings once the story polls went up and then the meeting took place. But I, I don't know if you were aware of the plans being available or that you could have. You know, gotten out ahead or or asked more questions. Um, and I, this is not a loaded question at all. I just am curious what you were expecting to happen. Um, versus what actually happened.
Okay, so in January, this is Kaveh, I stopped by one day. I I happened to be outside and she. Stopped by and so I met her in the yard and she introduced herself and told me that she and her husband had bought the property. Um, over on West Ridge and and so we, it took me a few minutes to clarify which property it was. And then, and we we essentially had this nice conversation and she sort of, and she sort of handed me this, the paper. Which was the notice that they were going to, but she, in the conversation, however. And so. Yes, like just from that, I am at fault for not reading the paper carefully, going to the website and looking at what was going to happen. That was my mistake. However. In our conversation, I very quickly, when I realized what the, which property it was. It very quickly commented or expressed our, how much my husband and I love that hill because. That is where, you know, we watch the deer and the coyotes and, I mean, and we we purposely, there had, there is an old fence and we purposely have sort of pushed it aside. To make sure the deer could go through, you know, freely and. So. And then she she did say, oh, well, we're going to rebuild the house because it's an old house. So. I, I just, I I just thought she was just being nice and letting us know and that. Of course. Yeah, I, there was no, there was nothing that would lead me to think that they were actually going to. Recite the house and put a block, yeah, so that that was my error.
And and again, these are just questions about what you knew and and were.
Right, so so then, yes, okay, so then when the story polls went up. That, that was shocking because, partly because we had assumed, and one of the reasons I hadn't been concerned early on is because we had assumed that it was not. That the town wouldn't let anyone build on that hill. I mean, we we knew enough about the design guidelines to think, to felt, to have felt safe about that. So even if, I think even, I just never would, it wouldn't have occurred to me that somebody would build up there or be allowed to build up there. So anyway, when the story polls went up, I, that was a Friday afternoon. On Monday, I think I I emailed Ralph. Because I had some other communication with him and asked him, well, is this, I I I remember I wrote. Hey, you know, can you please let us know, you know, these story polls went out up and it seems to us that it's not aligned with design guidelines? Is this really, is for real? And and I was just told to submit my concerns in writing by Friday and. Show up at the meeting on Monday, the following Monday, so which I did, but of course, then you know the rest from the meeting notes. So that's what happened.
Two last questions. If you had had a chance at that meeting to come back. With a. A response, because my understanding was after the decision was made, you did not get a chance to weigh in again. Do you know what you would have said or? Had, you know, would you have had something in mind?
Well, again, it goes back to this idea that I, we didn't think this was shitty, that this was permitted. And so. I I felt like there was some error made by the ASC, like one of the commissioners, I mean, one of the commissioners actually. Said literally in his, as he was approving, he said, well, it's their hill. And and, you know, which. Okay, but then why are we worrying about paint colors? Yeah, if if everyone can do what they want.
And my last, oh, I'm sorry, please. My last question is, and you've you've already answered this in one way. But the screening with trees, I understand it will always be there. But. but the screening with trees, I understand it will always be there, but you know, your reaction to having screening there, more vegetation, blocking the same view as a structure, I don't know if you have any comments on, on that, on the difference there, if it makes any difference to your experience?
I, I don't know. I mean, behind the trees, there's still a wall. So I don't know.
Thanks. That, I just wanted to hear what you said. Thank you.
Yeah, 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 thanks.
Okay, Anne, back to you.
Great, thanks. I, I guess I just have a small follow-up on that. I normally use this for, or save this for later discussion and comments, but it does seem like maybe more back and forth is good. So why, why isn't the, could you talk more about the screening? You say, well, there's still a wall, but you wouldn't see the wall, right, if there were, uh, trees kind of between your property and theirs?
You're right, yeah. I mean, it would be, I mean, you're the wall of trees. It's, it would be a ball of trees.
Yeah, I, people don't like walls or trees. It would be a scattering of bushes or trees, not in a line. Looking at the house, right?
Yeah, I'm, it, it's hard to comment on that. I'm sorry.
Okay. Okay, good. I think we're now to the part where the applicant will make a presentation. Let's see, who's that? Is that gonna be Sue, Kava? Kava?
It'll be me. Can you hear me now? I, I unmuted myself and I'll share my screen.
Yes, perfect.
Okay. Where's the big one? Okay, well, thank you very much. Good evening, planning commissioners. Good evening, neighbors. Not my neighbors, but Sue and Farrel's neighbors. We really appreciate your time this evening. I am, my name is Stuart Welty and I'm the principal architect at EID Architects. We've been located in Palo Alto and designing in the Bay Area for several decades. We focus primarily on sustainable design. We've won lots of awards, including the Governor's Award for Sustainable Design. So that every design we, we bring to a new community is highly energy-efficient and sustainable in every way. This is a view on the screen right now that is characteristic of Portola Valley. And our goal this evening is to illustrate for you the many ways that we've considered this unique character in Portola Valley and followed all the design criteria. We've worked closely with staff over many months and several iterations, six resubmits, in fact, to achieve a harmonious design for this new 1195 West Ridge home, a new, a new ADU and supporting structures. During that time, in answer to some of the comments that were made by our neighbors, potential new neighbors, are that Sue and Farrel, the owners, did reach out many, many times and there is a, you know, many, many pages, I would dare say hundreds of pages of documenting that communication, those communication efforts over this, what is this, August eight-month period, in, in the previous pre-planning efforts before that, in 2021. So we've been open to, you know, comments and working with the staff throughout this process. And we've, again, the, 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 the design has changed and, and developed through that time. Our goal has always been to, you know, honor the unique character here in, in Portola Valley and to cite the home, number one, in a way that is consistent with the site in the homes in the, that, that most greatly exemplify this character. So one of the criteria for that is to understand our lot, understand that we have a, essentially a triangular-shaped lot. As the Conservation Committee noted, which is, by the way, one of the groups that we do try to be very sensitive to, that we have some very mature and beautiful and healthy tree groves around our perimeter that are very evident here. And so one of our goals is always to increase, keep and possibly increase the health of those types of grows. Create a habitat. Sometimes the lots over decades, even though it's Portola Valley, sometimes the lots have become a little bit barren. And some might say, from a habitat or ecological standpoint, a little bit abused. And this, this can be enhanced and restored, this health of the, of this kind of a lot, so that these trees can have the other smaller shrubs and plants off of the native plant list that will help them to not only retain their health, but also be able to withstand jolts in the, in the environmental atmosphere, et cetera, so that, you know, when global warming comes along, like it is now, that, that these trees can have a chance to adapt and they don't get shocked. And part of that is to have the right habitat of other plants around that, which then foster also the animals, et cetera. So to that end, we're proposing to remove no trees and we're keeping all of the existing trees. And we're proposing no new fences because we do believe in wildlife corridors and free movement of the wildlife. There are fences installed by our neighbors that, you know, or maybe folks who lived there before, our neighbors lived there, but there are fences along our northern property line and our eastern. And for ease of discussion, since this is West Ridge, even though north is at an angle toward the left, we'll call this, we, we call this in our drawings west, this direction north, and this is east and this is south towards Cervantes. So just for orientation purposes. Yeah, so, so we, we look at the lot and we decide, you know, where is the proper placement of the home? Well, the number one thing in Portola Valley is to work with the fire department because all of the old driveways and old homes do not meet the current criteria. And the fire department is very strict and very stern, very adamant about creating a, a proper driveway according to their standards, which have strict slope radii with configuration criteria. What that boils down to is that the amount of room it takes to accommodate fire apparatus is definitely larger today than it was in days gone by. The next thing is, okay, where should the driveway enter from? Well, again, the Conservation Committee noted that we have very healthy tree, tree groves around our perimeter and, and we have a very narrow, almost a point of access from Cervantes, which of course is way too close to the intersection. So that the, the primary option for the driveway entrance is in its current location, which is between mature trees, the roots are established. So establishing the new driveway, which will require a little extra width, won't hurt the roots because they're already accommodated, they're already used to the concept of the driveway being there. So to that end, we look around the other directions of our site and we say, you know, toward the front is, you know, becomes very narrow and starts to become constrained. And also, as we come toward the front of the lot, we become very prominent and very, whatever we do, no matter what size the structure would be, it would be very apparent to anyone coming through Portola Valley anywhere, the majority of folks living around this intersection. Sorry, the screen, there it is. Click on this page. Thank you. Sorry about that. A little technical difficulty on this end. So this, this configuration here, this lot, set of lot lines clear, clearly illustrates where our neighbors' lot lines are. So we share our largest lot line with West Ridge, our second largest lot line with our northern neighbor, our third largest property line with four 80 Cervantes and then four 70 Cervantes. And this point, we don't share a property line, but we share a property point with 115 Metalwood Drive. Just to orient everyone to where the configuration, these are our neighbors' homes and they're the way, you know, the way they've developed their lots with presumably per the ASCC and design guidelines as well. This, these slides here start to show how much of the lot would be visible from various areas along the surrounding our property in terms of how the existing contours are shaped and how you may catch a glimpse of our lot or the natural terrain from any particular location around our, around our lot. So this is not only shows, these next few slides not only show how much of our lot is visible from each particular neighbor, but from all neighbors around us as a group. From across the street, this portion of the lot is highly visible. From our next-door neighbor, this, they have probably the widest view of our lot because they're looking up the slope from where they are toward the width of our lot. Then from the rear yard of four 70 Cervantes, they would have a view, a, a width of view, a scope of view approximately that, you know, if you consider their property lines. This is from 115. Again, through a, you know, really a very narrow view corridor through that, through these fences, this group of fences that cascade down their lot. And from our northerly neighbor, they have second or maybe first greatest view of our lot. Now, put those all together and our lot is visible by, to some degree, from every direction. So to balance this out, we looked at the, the lot in, in relation to the configuration of the fire apparatus turnaround, which again, has very strict rules and have very limited arrangements that it can be, that it, it can be configured into in order to accommodate all the rules. And this illustrates the tightest and most compact fire apparatus legal turnaround that we can create. And so that's where we started. We tried to minimize that so that we could keep that as close to the West Ridge as we could, so that we could keep all of the buildings grouped as close to West Ridge as possible and utilize the largest portion of our lot, the largest width, which would then allow us to have the greatest amount of setbacks around our new structures. So to that end, we, the setbacks are shown lightly here around the perimeter and you can see that these are the allowed setbacks. Our home, where it currently sits, is only one foot closer to the eastern property line than the existing home that's stated in the staff report. From downhill, just to reiterate that, so centering, putting, placing the home here, you can see the distance from us to their northern neighbor, to all of our neighbors around us, you, you essentially have a circular configuration. And of course, in the circle, if you, if you put in, in the center of the circle is the greatest distance from all of the folks who live around the perimeter of that circle. So this location gives the best location setback-wise to the entire neighborhood as opposed to just one neighbor. This accommodates everyone. From the downhill view, the existing home as, you know, sort of old style and you know, austere as it is, is highly visible from Cervantes. And so this beautiful character of Portola Valley that everyone loves so much, which couldn't, which can be enhanced and even made prettier than this because all it needs is some, is a few more native plants to, again, bolster these habitats. But then we have this visible on our, which is, you know, this, the top of this slope from Cervantes. Well, so that maybe isn't the best approach to placing a home on this lot. Again, centering the home among all of the existing neighbors gives the greatest setback to all of them and is much larger, sometimes eightfold the required setback. The placement of our home is not on the top of anything. The, it's exactly the opposite. It's below our neighbor, neighbor to the north. It's nestled into a natural contour break in our lot. Our lot slopes up and then it becomes a little bit steeper toward the back, toward the north. And we nestled the home in order to, to not eliminate, but to greatly reduce the amount of excavation that we would have to create to, an earth movement that we have to do in order to, not, to create the home, the new home and accommodate the fire apparatus turnaround. So we, we took advantage of the shape of the lot, nestled it into the earth. And so essentially, we have an earth-sheltered one-story home. And, and using the earth as a embankment to to, to really, to embrace the, the sides and back of the home. Now, we stepped down the structures as we come to the perimeters, the garage and the ADU stepped down lower. And the distance, and so they, they're again, they're basically earth-sheltered. The distance from the earth to the plate height, the, the discussion about the plate height was apropos because the plate height to the earth at the back of the garage is only five feet. And the plate height, so the vertical distance from the ground, you, a, a, a lot, many people standing next to this garage will be taller than the garage. At the end of the home along the back side, it's six feet. So again, many people standing next to this home on the back side are gonna be able to see right over the top of the roof. Oh, and by the way, so our intention is to nestle the home into the lot, into the lower contours of the earth and not obscure folks' views and not set, definitely not to obscure the, the actual hills and ridge lines. This is essentially a series of sloped lots. This is a hill and a ridge line. Again, from the north looking south and the folks, you know, to the north and some of our neighbors, several of our neighbors actually wrote very complimentary letters. When, when Sue and Farrel met with the neighbors, they didn't just go to one or two neighbors, they went to everybody. They went to all the neighbors. And some neighbors, you know, had, you know, very productive conversations and wrote very, you know, nice letters. And this is one of them. And so we, you know, the home before we lowered, you know, and, and so to step back into, into address the idea of the ASCC, that, you know, planning staff and ASCC, those are bodies that are, that do this for, you know, well, the planning staff does this for a living. They do this every day. They read the guidelines and they know them by heart. They don't take them lightly and they certainly don't approve anyone on the first round. Again, we resubmitted six times. So the home was taller, a little bit taller. You could see more of this roof line along here previously. We lowered it at the east end and now you can still see a tad from the north side, but not much. And these, some of these are new plants, the new Tojones, which are off the native plant list, and some of them are existing oleander. And anyway, this is windy hill view in the distance. So again, these are the kind of considerations we've been, we tried to make from every direction. So another architect in our office, Mark Womack, he will now walk you through some great detail. And again, at, at the end of our presentation, we're open to any discussion, any comments, any questions, and we can go into as much detail as you would like. And Mark will now take you through some of the detail regarding the views, the existing views, the, and the new views, et cetera. Thank you.
Good evening. What I want to do is shift our focus to look more closely at the relationships between our proposed residence and the two appellant's lots, so that we can specifically understand the relationships and, and what issues we have about preserving views and maintaining privacy and screening. Focusing first on four 70 Cervantes. Stuart pointed out, I'm sure, a common rear property line. There are views directly from this property across our, our lot. Looking at, at the, currently the empty portion of, of the lot in which there's, there's no development. There's no solar panels or any development of any sort on this property in this corner. They also have views obliquely across their lot that, that could see the location of the, of the proposed residence if it were not screened. If it were not screened appropriately, it, it could be very invasive. To understand how to design and place our house on the property, we did look carefully at 470 Cervantes. We, we wanted to understand how the house and the yard spaces were designed to live together. We realized that the predominant exterior space of the house, the most highly developed with trellises and pools and so forth, which is actually in, in the side yard, but that there was also a substantial rear yard, a large, nice, flat area that, that also contained some windows in the rear elevation that were exposed to the, the rear property line. We identified a very thick, mature landscaping screen in between 470 and 48, 480 Cervantes, as well as a mature redwood grover, if you will, aligning trees along the property line. Looking at it from a Google Earth perspective, back from our property, you, you kind of get a sense of where that pool is. It's actually hidden in, in view by the Google Earth trees here. But this is the relationship that, that we're, that we're looking at, that we really need to understand in order to make an informed decision on this question. For the benefit of those who haven't been out to the site and haven't experienced the relationship between our property and, and 470s, we decided we should, we should, let's gather some photographs to help demonstrate what exists out there. We took photographs from the story pools that you see here, concentrating on the three corners of the building that are the closest to Cervantes. We put together an array of photographs, the upper array of photographs here were taken with a drone. They're at the top of the roof plan. So basically what you're doing is you're at the highest elevation here, looking down at 470 Cervantes, actually over on the, the right-hand side of the screen. That's really looking across 480 through to where the pool on 470 is. The center section is really looking more directly at the house. And then on the right, those views are further into the backyard. The lower array of photographs are actually taken essentially at eye level, standing adjacent to these story pools on site. Focusing on the, the center of these images down at, at eye level. You can see that the, the row of redwood trees at the back of this property is, is quite mature and affords a fairly significant degree of privacy and screening. Standing here, I can't really even see the house except for a couple of parts of the roof that you can see above, and down through underneath the under story of these trees. You know, obviously the landscaping screen is entirely monolithic, so it varies as you move from side to side. But, you know, returning back to this image, you can see that it's a fairly consistent screen that we're talking about. We were, we've been made aware that subsequent to taking these pictures, which we took after the appeal was filed, that some pruning occurred on the property. And we returned to, to, to see what effect this might have had on the screen, the screening that existed out there. The pruning was just down at the bottom level, essentially from eye level down to ground. And it does open up some of the vistas from eye level down into the yard space. Yeah, now this, yeah, yeah, just to, to confirm that these trees are on 470 Cervantes and, and those property owners were responsible for this pruning. But the screening is still there. We'll need to pay attention to how we add landscaping to our project to make sure that we don't adversely impact these views, even to the extent that they've been opened up now, and we can do that. Shifting it over to 115 Meadow Drive, Meadowwood Drive, as Stuart pointed out, we share a point of connection between our two properties. And it is essentially the view from down on the right, you see the house, the yard and the pool of the neighbors up through this point where there is a vista between trees up to where the house is proposed to be sighted. This is a, an image that was included in the appeal. That you, where you see that lawn, you see the pool, you look up the hillside, the, the brown grass that you're looking at up at the top is our, our client's property. And this gives you a sense of the relationship of that backyard and its features and the gap in the trees that we're, we're discussing today. So once again, we, we used the drone to take photographs at the top of the plate line and put together an array of photographs here that are focused more on 115 Meadowwood. Looking at the, an image taken from the middle of those three points, you, you see that you really can't see the home through that gap in the tree from this perspective. If you move up to the upper corner, you then do see the exposed area. And it is the story pools that are in line with this view that you're actually seeing in the images that were taken by the property owners at 115 Meadowwood. We've lightened this image and then zoomed in onto it so that you can see the yard space. And you can also see the windows of the living room, I'm assuming, or family room, the windows in the house, which would have a visible line of sight through this gap in the tree up to our property. So our objective in, in mitigating adverse impacts on these views for both of these properties is first, we're more than willing and happy to maintain this lower portion of the site in its current undeveloped status. We're not proposing anything down here. We're not proposing solar panels, fencing, nothing will be put down here save some landscaping, which we will orient in the foreground of this image. We're bringing that landscape further uphill because further uphill, it serves to screen the view more thoroughly without it being tall. And it preserves that open space between that landscaping and these property lines for the, the preservation of that, that open space. Returning again to an enlargement of that view, looking through from the backyard, you can see the, the, this, the, the line of the story pools in the background. And this simulates what a row of native species, oak trees or some other, something else off of the native species list would do to screen that view. You still see the, the, the grassland in between that screen and their fences, but we can easily screen the view of this fence, of this, the view of this house from, from this property. This section is cut through, looking from 115 up towards our house. Down on the right, you see a five-foot stick figure, if you will, and sidelines from that point, looking up towards our house. If I zoom in on this landscaping, you can see that we really don't even need 10 feet of, of landscaping placed in this area in order to effectively provide this screening. We've revised the landscape plan to concentrate more landscaping in the upper portion of this, of this line of sight here because we identified through these photographs that we really did need to pay more attention to the landscaping that, that screened from 115, the, the back of, of the proposed residence. At the bottom of this row of landscaping, we're also providing the, the new vegetation that will help screen from view any visibility of this lot. Because there, the, the propping line corner occurs where you see the existing redwood and oak. What in, this redwood and oak screen of trees transitions into non-redwood species. This is where the, the property line comes in. And so by planting this screen here, we're, we're effectively hiding the residence while preserving this open space here so that we, we're really doing what is asked of us and is, and we feel is required to mitigate adverse impacts of the massing of our house from, from these sidelines. I will, I do, I do want to say that I, I was surprised by some of the comments about how visible this, this house is from, you know, even from the interior of the rooms of their house. We haven't had the ability to look at or experience how our proposed residence is experienced by our neighbors. If they could share some photographs with us or even invite us onto their property so that we could experience, we could probably address any additional issues that may exist. But at the, at the end of the day, this is really, in my thinking, is a, a question of balancing the right of, of, of an applicant to develop their parcel while preserving to the fullest extent that we can our neighbor's view of that parcel. We're not talking about distant views of ridge lines. We're talking about our neighbor's view or the neighbor's view of our client's parcel. I'm going to walk you through some of the changes that we proposed in the plan. This is the roof plan that was approved by ASCC. The darkest color is the highest roof, then it steps down to a lower roof over the master bedroom. And then that we had proposed the lowest roof over the back bedrooms and the closet and, and master bathroom area to the east here. As Stuart pointed out, at this back corner, the upper right back corner, the roof line at that point is literally only six feet above existing grade right now. This is achieved through the excavation out to earth shelter, as Stuart says, this house. And, and to, to really minimize the height of this view as perceived by the neighbors, particularly from the perspective of 115, but also 470. We have carved back the tallest section of the roof and, and reduced the, the massing of that, that second section over the master bedroom itself to add a great deal more roof area to that lowest level, dropping by as much as four feet, some of these roofs. Now I'm, I'm going to back up a little here and go back to the section because I want you to see what we're talking about in terms of the distance and the angles of these vistas. And I want to return to this also because when we begin to discuss, as I know we will, whether a foot or two of dropping a plate height or top of roof is going to have a significant effect. When you consider the distance in between the lawn and the pool area and the angle of the sidelines, if I were to drop this upper roof a foot or two, it would be difficult to even measure the difference in the angle of the line of sight from a person down here up to that roof. The height of this roof, up or down slightly, isn't really going to substantially change the relationship of these properties. What does change the relationship of the new house to the existing properties are these, these trees, the, the native vegetation plant, planning that we're going to bring in and strategically locate to hide these residences. Also to address another question, which I know you're going to return to, I want to elaborate a little on the questions of the hammerhead. Because I know that there has been some disagreement about how thoroughly, how thoroughly we looked at this and what opportunities we have to do something else. Now Stuart talked about the native screen down here by Westwood. These are beautiful trees. You saw a picture of that at the introduction of this PowerPoint presentation where you saw the character of Westwood in front of this property. It is absolutely gorgeous. In order to maintain or satisfy the requirements for fire truck access, we have a very strict limit on the slope of this driveway coming in. Because we don't want to adversely impact any of the root structure of these native trees or we really don't want to begin to change the grade of this road until we start to come out from behind the canopy of these trees. Now we have to rise at the maximum level permitted up to a point where we can locate a hammerhead. We did look at the potential of bringing the hammerhead more directly into the property. The problem is, is that we would have to rise up quickly and we would quickly exceed the maximum slope of this driveway unless we came back and extended that slope in underneath the tree line. We did not want to do that. We don't want to adversely affect any of those trees. We use the radius of this turn to give us a distance to help us make the changes that we needed in elevation to get up to a turnaround. Now that hammerhead also has really strict limitations on crosswalks. So we really have to make sure that we orient this hammerhead so that it runs parallel with the topography and not perpendicular to the topography. This really proved to be the only reasonable and feasible way for us to get this hammerhead in place. So I think now I, I'll return the presentation to Stuart to wrap up his thoughts before we go back to, to, to commission for questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Mark, can you be brief?
I can. Absolutely. Yes. Once again, this would be the, you know, enhanced native habitat. These are, you know, native plants to bolster the habitat for the existing tree growths that the Conservation Committee noted were significant and should be, you know, worked with if at all possible. To, to that end, the ASCC, when they approved us, did so unanimously and did so, as you say, with conditions that were not required in order to be approved. They were a request by the ASCC to, to, if, you know, to look at one more time and bring back to two members on a staff level basis to discuss the potential for. And so we did look at all of, all of the points they requested. They, they requested essentially three areas to be looked at. One of them was the height, one of them was the materials and colors, and one of them was the vegetation, the landscaping. We looked at all three and we actually worked with the owners and we worked with staff and we worked with the various experts in the field. And we, we did enhance all three of those. We made adjustments. We adjusted the materials and colors. We even went to the building department. As you know, Portola Valley has extremely strict rules for the Uwe requirements, the most strict of any jurisdiction we ever worked in, even, even up north near Chico, they're not as strict as they are in Portola Valley. So some stone products aren't even allowable in Portola Valley because they don't have the right rating. But anyway, so we worked with them. We, we adjusted the materials. We brought the colors more into keeping with the earth tones that, I mean, they were already pretty close, but we tweaked them to make them even better, better matched to the existing tones that are out in the hill. And of course, when we begin the project, we would be doing mockups to confirm once again that the materials we're using and the colors that are pigments that are being chosen are actually going to look the same on, on the site as they do in images, et cetera. In terms of the height, Mark went into great detail and described how we lowered the roof heights to the lowest available roof height. We stepped down the elevations greatly on both ends and we kept the narrowest portion of the building of the structure facing toward the east and west and then nestled the rest into the hill. This again is the view from down at Cervantes and Apache and, and Westridge, the intersection. And with the new location and, and, and configuration, you was, that really what will be prominent is the natural landscaping, the native and natural landscaping for Portola Valley, not the architecture. And the, the landscape, I think, speaks for itself. Again, choosing plants off the native plant list, not just the preferred plant list, but the native, the most restrictive plant list. And we worked hard with the landscape architect to make sure that we got the right balance of those plants and the right locations. Again, through that analysis of the scope of view and plan and the, and the inclination of view in the sections, we took great pains, we work in a very accurate, you know, Revit programs that, so everything's tied into the county datum. So the, the topography and the contours that we show are extremely accurate. And so, yeah, we, we worked really hard to make sure that the configurations and the overall configuration and, and impression in the end was very natural feeling. So that's really our presentation. We thank you again for your time and your patience and we're happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you. So we'll bring it back to the commission for questions of the applicant. Who wants to go first this time? Nicholas? Nicholas, you're muted. Do you want to go?
There we go. So I think everybody's having a little bit of a technology issue here. Note that I have my telephone and like the computer on.
Yes, good job.
Yeah, no, I'm sorry, it's, it's, it's quite a bit to digest, frankly. Yeah, no, I, I'm sorry. It's, it's, it's quite a bit to digest, uh, frankly. Um. My my thought is that there basically three issues, just as you called out, uh, that were uh identified by the ASCC and uh and, and, and I think that you, you, you've actually uh hit them. I think that I have sort of fewer questions than and perhaps more appropriately uh uh sort of oriented towards uh, uh, towards discussion, really at this point. I note that there, you know, it's interesting to see that it's a two acre lot that has been manipulated pretty severely uh over time. That the veg that's on it is uh oriented towards existing views and a lot of the vegetation, the redwood trees aren't really appropriate to be in the location that they're in. Uh, but they are vertical green fence. Uh, so I think that this lot is in certain sense a challenging lot and you can see that by the manipulation that's gone into the um uh, the vegetation. Uh, I can, I guess I'm just gonna close by noting that if you have a Keystone lot, you really are kind of in Macy's window. Uh, and uh, any modification from that from a longstanding property, other property owners will of course have developed their properties and their view sheds in a way that reflects uh, uh, the location of the uh structures that are on uh on the, uh, on the buildings, uh, uh, on, on the properties. I questioned the use of coffee berry uh on a south facing hill. I didn't know that you could do that. I can't do that on my property, but I assume that there are arborists who will guide you to help you make that work. So, and this is a very unsatisfactory or unsatisfying kind of response to the presentation. But I think that's what I've got for you at the moment.
Okay. That's what you've got? Let's see. Judith, do you wanna go next? Any questions for the applicant?
Yeah, just a few. Um. Had other neighbors requested to see the plans between January and May? And, or did you show them regardless of whether they were requested?
Uh, Sue may have to answer that. She probably knows the best. Sue and Faro um walked the plans to all neighbors. And of course, they were invited by staff and by email, by, you know, so many ways, um, all the neighbors. And some neighbors responded by email, some responded by actually inviting Sue and Faro over, some wrote, you know, many of the neighbors, there's lots of positive letters in our, in our.
Right. I, I focused on the plans who had asked and when.
So, yes, uh, my, uh, our communication, my husband and my communication uh to the neighbors were exactly the same. We introduced ourselves, we gave them the form that Ralph sent us to communicate uh our project being in process. One neighbor, um, eleven's uh AD uh Westridge savages. Uh, they actually had a genuine interest in the location of our house. They were very concerned. So they welcomed us, they asked us some questions and when we left, two days later, I believe, they sent me an email and said, we want to review your uh plans. Can you print and bring them over? Which, of course, we did. Uh, we made an appointment, we printed the plans, we went to their house, we showed them everything. And we really, you know, we really weren't sure at that point where things were going to be, but uh then they, they were not even satisfied by that. They said, we wanna see the lot, we wanna see exactly where every structure is gonna be. And at that point, we were deciding where to put our ADU. We weren't so sure if it would be down uh or up. Exactly, really, we were deciding where to put the ADU. So we took them the same day, we took the plans and we walked to our lot. We spent about an hour there and based on the overlap of existing and the new structure, we figured out where every structure was going to be placed. So they looked at the main structure, they were okay with that. And then they said ADU, basically, we decided the location of the ADU together. Because they did not want the noise from our house to travel to theirs and apparently that was an issue with the previous owner. So we zeroed in on the ADU location, which was very good for us because, you know, it moved things along with some satisfaction for us also that we knew we had a, a neighbor who was going to be unhappy with us probably. We made him happy. Um, so we, we spent an hour or maybe more than an hour with him and he became a supporter.
When was that? Thank you. That was helpful, but when roughly?
Uh, the first meeting with all the neighbors except for uh Mrs. Anne Gogan, because she didn't answer, but we posted uh the notice on her door and later uh, uh, their family contacted me and I went there and introduced myself. But on one thirteen, January thirteen, I met with all the four neighbors who were available. And with savages, the second meeting was, I believe, on January twentieth.
Okay. Um, the other question that I had was probably for the architect, just there are some mentions in the materials on water flow on the site. And if you could explain how you're thinking of that, is there an issue? How have you managed it, if at all? Um, it would be helpful for us to understand that risk.
Sure. Um, in the set, there is a sheet uh for the civil engineer C four, which shows it the most clearly. Um, and so the existing contours of the lot flow in, you know, to all the sides. And it, and it's a, you know, like you say, a decent sized lot. And so there's probably considerable, considerable flow because the existing uh structures there and the existing um utilities, really, you know, they're not up to current codes. And so the w- water really is not, uh, hand, stormwater is really not handled like it's supposed to be. Uh, these days, we, you know, we work to follow the rules to uh, and make sure that the, the C three, C six requirements are all um, uh, adhered to. And um, so a lot on C four, you'll see um, uh, uh, all around the north and east and south side of the proposed uh development is um drainage uh accoutrements, uh V ditch, uh slopes, uh swales, um, tight lines and the water is brought from the north of the lot instead of flowing off to the uh east and to the uh, to west, the water is brought down around the home and out to the, to the west. Where the new sewer system will be a step uh forced main. And the, so the stormwater will all be captured out toward the west of the lot, toward, close to Westridge. So that um, as it's retained according to the rules and then metered out slowly, the uh metering will occur in the right spot. So uh, the, the, the stormwater outflow toward the east will be tremendously reduced from the current uh configuration.
Okay, thank you. That was helpful. Uh, and back to you. Okay, sounds good. How about you, John? Do you have any questions for the applicant?
Do, I do. I think I have one question for Stuart. So Stuart, um, in, towards the end of your um presentation, you were talking about you hadn't had the chance to get on to the uh neighbor sites, sites to uh, to maybe think about things. And I under- clearly, things have gotten kind of tense. So, but you know, what were you, could you elaborate a little bit on that, about what you were thinking and what that if anything might result in or, you know, where were you going with that? And, and I guess I'm trying to explore, you know, what might work with the neighbors to diffuse some tensions or uh establish better relations moving forward.
Yeah, I don't know if it's uh tension is the right word, but it's, you know, seems to be just sort of a, um, I don't know. Just a dissatisfaction with, with, like you, uh, I think what was brought up by the neighbors themselves. And in fact, this is how, for the most part, this is how we've uh worked with the, the, the two, the two neighbors um, who ha- are part of the appeal, where uh rather, you know, we have a drone, we fly the drone, that's typical. We don't fly it over people's, any folks' lots who, you know, may not want us to. Uh, we always like to get permission, et cetera. So it, when we understood that they were concerned about certain views, we um created views uh from our lot looking toward them and then interpolated, of course, the reverse of that from, from that view now. And then, of course, we worked with the, again, the contours, the topo- topography and the photographs to create very accurate.
Let me interrupt. No, I'm more interested, what would you like to see happen? I mean, if, if everything was perfect and people were, you know, trying to work together.
Well, we, yeah, so it worked out, it worked out fairly well.
I don't wanna get into the who shot pictures of whom, where, what drones flew over whom. It's like.
All right. Yeah, well, I guess I brought that up because just to, to uh, to um reinforce to you that the, the views that we have created are accurate. Because then we based some of the, then they, uh, they did a, um, uh, a, provide photographs to us, to the owners uh that, then we used for our presentation from their lot of the, where the, of the views that they were concerned. So that's how, then we have those views in our presentation uh to show exactly what they were thinking of. And so that communication was, you know, maybe not as direct as it could have been, but it, it did work. I mean, it did provide us with an uh image of what they were thinking. Now, the little things like, well, we have a mature, healthy um habitat and wooded um grove of trees along the, along the property lines. Now, is that the best way to plant trees? We don't know exactly. But you know, that's how it was done in the past. They're mature, they're, they're healthy, the Conservation Committee loves them. And they were thick and nice green landscape uh screens. Now, up until two weeks ago, they were extremely thick, as you saw in the photos. Then, then they were trimmed and there were views were actually opened up, which seems counterintuitive.
That's enough. That's okay. Thank you.
Is that all your questions, John?
Yes.
Okay. And I have no further questions. Okay, so now we'll get to the public part. So if neighbors or other members of the public would like to speak. And as usual, we do it with the um and raising feature of Zoom. Great. And I see Dave Cardinal's hand up, so we'll start with him.
But, great, thanks. Uh, first of all, uh, as someone who knows a lot about drones, I don't think reversing the image on a drone is going to help you. And second, to follow up on John's question, I think what he's asking is you said you were not allowed access to the planist's property and that you could have done something else if you had gotten there, but your response was, seemed totally non-appropriate. Didn't, it said, didn't say what more you could have done. So I'm just curious what, how you wanna follow up on that or what your thoughts were. Thanks.
Good. And um, the way we run these is we take the questions and then we'll um both the applicant and the applicant will be able to answer things, so you can respond to tho- any comments that have come up um at that time. So we'll go on. I see Greg uh Gomez.
Yes, hi, thank you. Um, I'm a California licensed appraiser and I've done some work at the uh property, the, the subject property. And I just wanted to, just hearing all the, all the comments this evening, I wanted to um highlight a few things. First of all, we're not talking about um someone doing anything that they want. Um, it seems to me as though there's, there's been very careful consideration uh for all neighbors in consideration. Um, six to eight or maybe more. Uh, there's been very strict adherence to general plan zoning and decide, uh, design guidelines. Um, screenage has been designed to accommodate. This is certainly the right approach. This approach allows for adherence to zoning uh, the general plan, design guidelines, uh, and very special attention to neighbors. This is the right approach to, to develop a property where all requirements are met. The property owners have rights to. And in a marketplace, when buyers and sellers are going to interact, predictability for what buyers and sellers can anticipate is essential for establishing and maintaining value. Uh, and so when you take, when, when someone anticipates, they can follow such a rigid approach that's been taken here for all stakeholders. This is exactly what needs to happen. When this approach is taken and then it's objected to uh, and that objections are followed through on, this is exactly what erodes long-term value on a property. Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you, Greg. Let's see. Next, we have Lauren um Dakin or Dacken.
Can you hear me?
Yes, good.
Great, thank you. Uh, several months ago, I met Sue and she introduced herself to me. She uh discussed the ideas of her home, she showed me her plans. As a side note, I've developed many, several properties in San Antonio County over the last decade. Uh, I currently live at one, I currently own one one eight Apache. I'm directly across the street. I'm at the corner of Westridge and Apache. And quite frankly, I'm the most exposed to her out of anyone. If you look out my living room window, I can see all levels of all structures. I see the most structures. When you take a look at the the story pulls it up right now, you can see that they've done a great job of trying to build everything into the hill. And I think, in my, in my opinion, they're keeping with the spirit of, of uh of what Portola Valley is and the design is tasteful. Um, I think they, from what I've read, they, they're playing within the rules. And uh, they've done everything they can. She has expressed to me, called me several times, asking for my opinion. What do you think I should do? And, and I think they've done everything they can do and to continue to drag this on for them because the fortune to draw these plans up, there's a monthly expense of sitting here and waiting. And we're, we're talking about a little, a little bit, uh, some, some trees to be planted to let them move forward. Um, and for them to have to go back six times to review, I, 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 I just think we're really uh really hurting them more than anyone else. And I think they've gone through the process. They're following the rules, their architects have done a wonderful job. And I, I think it's time to let them move forward. So that's my view. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Lauren. Let's see, and next we have Dana.
It looks like her hand went down.
Oh, yes, you're right. Okay.
Oh, wait, there's, okay, ba- it's back. Just a second.
Yep, okay.
Here's Dana. Hey Dana.
I'm mute. I'm mute. Got it? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, you guys, um. I was asked to take a look at this by Irene. I am a twenty-year ASCC veteran. Um, and I have no comments about the design or the way the ASCC did it. It was absolutely congruent when I, when I went over the, uh, when I, there were no, there were no minutes, so I watched the, the, the film. Then I wrote a letter, which was not in your packets, um, and it was not visible for the public. Then I wrote a letter, which was not in your packets and it was not visible for the public to see. So, I mean, I'm really brought back Judith by your first question tonight is, you know, what is a plate height? And I want to know if Irene knows what the plate height is. And so I, the fact that there was no preliminary, and I think that we need to go back to preliminary meetings for all new houses. These people had no ability to respond to the first time they were hitting, hearing the ASC comments. And I have a problem with that. That something that when you have a preliminary meeting, everybody's on site. You go to all the neighbors' houses, everybody talks, what are the issues? Where are the concerns? And these people did not have that ability. And I have a problem as, as a 20-year veteran on ASC, I have a problem with that. And I think that, that it needs to be balanced. So while, yes, I appreciate your design and you know, what you guys are trying to do, the, the residents were not heard. And they didn't have the ability to respond. And, and, and that really troubles me. And I think, I hope as all of you guys go on and planning commission, I think ASC needs to go back on new houses to preliminary meetings. Thank you.
Thanks, Dana. Let's see. I don't see any more hands up. So any last minute public hands? I don't think so. Okay, our next step is gonna be, um, closing remarks from the appellate, recommended to keep to three minutes. And then we'll go to closing remarks for the applicant. So I think now to Irene.
Yeah. Oh, wait a minute. Let me turn my, ah, lights back on. It's gotten kind of dark here. Okay. So I, I don't really have much to add except to address a couple of the, our arguments or issues that were raised by architect, I suppose. And so one is that in their presentation at the ASC and in our, in, and today, there was just a lot of discussion about the idea that this was, they had to put this pass on this site. And I, I really, I feel that that's somewhat disingenuous that I, I did submit it with our appeal. I did submit a photo of the view of the property from the corner of Servantes and Westridge. There's some, first of all, it's, the property sits above Servantes and Westridge. And there's, as you carried on about the lovely mature oak trees. So essentially, if you are walking on Servantes and Westers right now, you can even, it's, it granted, it's a one-story house on the existing site, but you can't even see it. So putting something larger, more impactful seems like it, it really wouldn't be so impactful as they are suggesting. And, you know, furthermore, they're having sort of a pool in front of the house. And all they would have to do is shift the house in front and put the pool in back. And, and that would really solve it because now, you know, the, the, the existing property line with the next, with the next door neighbor that because where the old house was, that's already quite well screened. And then, of course, we wouldn't see it and the head of ours wouldn't see it if it were kind of closer to where the existing house is, or at least where they, where they're proposing to put the pool. So anyway, all I'm saying is, I really, I, I think that the, the idea that the site, the proposed site is the only possibility probably is arguable. And so I, I think that's really most of what I would respond to. I, if there was anything else. Actually, there is one thing and that is, and I, I hesitate to bring this up, but I understand that some of the neighbors are very concerned about upzoning. And so there's this sentiment that if we don't allow people to build whatever they want, or you know, that there's like, well, if we don't let them build, then they're going to upzone it and we're going to have multi-unit. I don't know. So I feel like that it's unfortunate that that we're going to get hamstrung by that attitude. I feel like there's probably better ways to go about it. Okay. But I won't take any more of your time. I, I know you've been here a long time and there's lots more to go. So thank you very much for your time and consideration. And, um, yeah. That's all. Thank you.
Thanks, Irene. So next we'll go to the applicant. So is that Stuart?
Well, I guess I'd like to say thanks, first of all, for your time. Once again, I think that we have, as has been stated, we have been very thorough. We've, we came into the project following, you know, reading and following all of the tremendous amount of design guidelines. We've worked with staff, we've worked with, you know, many staff members, we've worked with various departments. We've worked with the neighbors and now some neighbors were very, you know, forthcoming and had, you know, communication. Everyone received the same packets. Everyone received the same information. Some folks responded more gratuitously than others. I, I don't know what else to say about that. We were provided with information by even the neighbors who weren't extremely communicative. And, and they allowed, and they gave us some information that was pertinent to them, that was important. And we use that information to the best of our ability to show that exactly what they gave us. And then to show how exactly what they gave us can be, you know, it can be handled in a very sensitive way. Again, our lot, we're not planting plant, new plants on our property line. We're not building new fences. We are very open. We are pulling, we are being as sensitive as we can. We're pulling plants away in a very natural fashion and allowing our neighbors to view as much of our lot or as much past our lot as is possible from every direction. And I think that's attested to by the fact that we, you know, a lot of folks are very complimentary of the project, of the design. And I think that the drawings and the analysis that we've shown had, you know, has been very detailed. And, you know, there's even more where that came from, if you care to know. But I, I, I just feel like we've done our best. We have been sensitive. We have been thoughtful. We've really thought a lot about it, I guess. I mean, you can see my forehead. I had a little more hair eight months ago. But anyway, I, you know, thank you and I, I hope you appreciate the, you know, how that we, how we've tried to nestle the home into the natural contours of the lot into, in a way that really complements the overall character of Portola Valley. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Okay. So now we'll come back to the planning commission discussion and then decision. Our choices are to deny the appeal and uphold what the ASC approved. We can deny that appeal and uphold the ASC, but with some additional conditions. We could approve the appeal and rescind the ASC approval, which could result in remanding the project to ASC for additional consideration. Or we could continue to a future meeting. So I think at first we'll just hear what the commissioners are thinking about the project and the status of it. Do any of you want to volunteer to go first? Have thoughts about it?
Yeah, I'll go first. And what I was really struck by was the viewshed images that were put forth. And that is, it is a pretty exposed site. Part of the reason why it's so exposed is because it is so devoid of, of, of plant life. And I think that there is certainly a meadow area. I can't speak to the quality of the meadow, but it looks like a pretty disturbed area with, out a lot of veg. So we heard a lot about non-planting, no fencing. So it is a house on a two-acre lot that is quite visible. And I can imagine that having been a neighbor with that, I think the term I used was keystone, and I think it's right. Property in the middle with some pretty significant variation is going to be a pretty jarring. It is going to be a real change from what that property has been, how people have aligned their screening and their veg to make their homes their own. And perhaps oriented their properties in that way. Having noted that, I don't see that as a infringement in and of itself on the guidelines or on the general plan, which is the, the first question that we're asked to look at. And is it on a ridge? It's not on a ridge. Is it subservient, perhaps more so as planned and certainly as modified than it is now? Is it different and in some ways upsetting to certain homeowners? Undoubtedly. It will be jarring until at least the veg has had the opportunity to come in. And one's understanding is the property have been given something concrete to, to focus on, rather than simply the modification of the property that's proposed with story poles. So from that perspective, and in light of the modifications that have been proposed that are responsive to a technically expert body in, in the ASC. I think that it is challenging certainly, but I don't see it as creating a problem or an infirmity, a breach of the GP or of, of the guidelines. I think that there are probably things that we could talk about with respect to process, but I'm not sure that's within the scope or the appropriate scope of this meeting. But rather is a broader question about how we might think about having a more deliberative process. You can have a lot of public process. But if it's not shaped to be deliberative, and I was really struck by Ms. Ruiz, who again, I said, and I wasn't being facetious, I thought she did a great job. But if you aren't accustomed to these processes and if you're meeting the issue in a, you know, what this is, an adversarial forum, it's rather than a, a more conversational deliberative structure, I think that it's, is truly, is truly challenged. So, uh, no, I would, at this point, you know, subject to hearing the other, other commissioners and the chair. I would suggest that we move forward with the ASC's findings, four to zero, as modified by the changes proposed by applicant in light of direction by ASC.
Great. Thanks, Nicholas. The, Judith or John, do you want to go next?
Sure.
Okay, great.
So, so I'm saddened that we're here. I feel for both the applicant and the appellant. The, the applicant has invested a lot of time, certainly a lot of money. And I think they've taken measures that they have felt were outward reaching and in good faith with the neighbors. And, you know, I wish there were an easier, an easier path here. The appellant and I, actually, since I'm not very sophisticated about architectural changes myself and since I've moved to town, I've had some instances where surprising things have happened on, on my, on or near my property. And I know for a fact that if you don't have noticed, you, you might not understand the scope of changes that are being proposed on a property. And that if you've been on your property for 15 or more years, that's disturbing to, to not have a heads up and then to feel like there's a short time window to get your mind around it and show up at a meeting and then not to have a chance to respond to the decision. I think that's wrong. I think there's a big process issue here that I am highly concerned about. I would revisit preliminary reviews, especially if there's going to be a reciting of the placement of a home on a site. This is a tough site. The applicant has really tried to be thoughtful, as we've heard, about considering the balance of neighbors and that's really hard. And I also, so I would have liked to have seen a process where all of the neighbors had, you know, a formal proceeding, maybe it's the preliminary review that used to be. But I would have thought that this is not an easy project. Why it was streamlined, put in the streamlined process, I do not understand. It's a triangular piece. It's very exposed. It's very degraded. And there are multiple neighbors' views. I would not have thought that was a simple project, especially if you're building, moving the building. So that's something I seriously think the, as Laura alluded to at the beginning, that there should be a meeting on process. I'm not the expert on these and I don't purport to be. I just think it's wrong when an applicant gets this far and there's this much strong feeling and a feeling of an inability to weigh in at the appropriate time. That's not okay. So I would support strongly looking at that process and reassessing what's going to be effective. Because these are huge investments, but you know, I, I'm somebody that does love an open hillside, you know, like, I, and I've had that taken away. So I, I'm there with you. I understand it. But that being said, I do think the applicant and the architect have been really leaning forward to try and address what they've heard within the scope of what they feel they can do. And I can't tell you if moving the building is possible. I'm, I've got to trust the experts have given it some thought. So from my point of view, I don't know that there is a different approach at this late juncture that is even possible. And I certainly wouldn't be the one to come up with it. So I can see the logic of Nicholas's suggestion to move forward with the additional conditions. What I also think would be helpful is, you know, a better process of communication, if there is any input that the appellant wants on, you know, specific plantings or anything. That's up to them. But I, I think giving them a chance to have that input right now makes sense. The alternative of remanding to the ASC to have some of all this pressure tested is a very difficult one for me because I do appreciate the amount of time and effort that has gotten us here. And I'm not convinced there's an alternative that. And I'm not convinced there's an alternative that is going to be workable. So that's what I'll say for now, Ian, and I'll let John comment.
Sounds great. Thanks Judith. Okay, John.
It's pretty interesting in that we have far more agreement among the planning commission than in terms of how we interpreted this than we often have. And not that we have a lot of disagreement, but I have notes here. Let me try to make sense of them, but they're going to sound a lot. I did start someplace different. And just trying to remind people that you know, people have property rights. And if they develop that property according to code, then they get to do that, you know, and the only way you stop that is by changing the code. And that by me municipal code. And you can't expect everybody around you to stay still and stop. People are going to continue to buy houses here. And they're going to take the old houses and given the prices of lots, we're going to get bigger houses. So there's going to be some change. And as long as people, those are the objective codes that as long as people are meeting, they're pretty much going to get to move forward. On top of that, though, we have some very important elements. We have our town general plan. We have our design guidelines. And those are things that are goals and guidelines and objectives and things we're trying to accomplish. But they are subjective. You know, it's not as if you can say it's a 50-foot setback. We're talking about, does it obstruct the neighbors' views? Those are really different things. And we have certainly the ASCC has a lot of experience in trying to interpret those. But you can't say you can have no impact on somebody's views. You try to, the words that you see in there are minimize or maximize, or, you know, try to move in this direction. And it's a balancing act. And I'm sort of back to, you know, there's not a perfect answer when you get a difficult lot in there. I was actually most concerned about this, kind of echoing, I think where Judith started, on the whole process issue, was did we have the right process here? And I do think it's our purview in the planning commission to look at whether or not process was followed. And it looks to me like process was followed based on all the notes I'm reading and the recommendation. That doesn't mean it was the perfect process, but I think this is very similar to our discussions around when people want to say, okay, do they need to apply by current code or the code when their project was approved? And I think this is, they followed the current guidelines. I would like to encourage some discussion, as my fellow commissioners have suggested, about trying to consider, was there something about this case that didn't work well from a process perspective, that we were not well-served as a community? But that doesn't mean change the results. That just means we should, that's something I'd like to recommend people consider. Probably the most disturbing thing about this, I found people were very nice in this meeting. A lot of the notes I read were a lot more combative than that. My interpretation. And you know, I like to see people, I guess I'm channeling Craig Taylor here. I like to see people trying to agree with each other and come to an agreement. But there was a lot of disturbing disagreement here. And again, I thank everybody on the public side to having been much more civil about that. And I would like to see if there's any way that you know, the neighbors can get over this in terms of moving forward. You know, it's going to decide one way or the other. But you're going to have to live with each other. And, and you know, I'd hope to see that we can, we can, I don't think you're going to become friends, but at least you can become good neighbors out of all that. Having said all of that, you know, and I considered remanding it back to the ASCC to try to deal with this, but I don't think that's going to make a difference. I don't think they're going to come to a different conclusion. You know, in terms of, I probably skipped over some of that, but it's pretty clear this project meets the code. From a subjective perspective, it meets all the guidelines and and directions and, and those types of elements associated with the general plan are beside guidelines. So I'd be recommending moving it forward and denying the appeal.
If I could, Ian, just ask Don to clarify, move forward and deny the appeal with or without additional conditions? Because that was number two of the four possibilities.
So my assumption is moving forward meant moving forward with the conditions associated with the ASCC. So which means that those items get reviewed by the two members of the ASCC, so they'll be looking at that. Does that answer your question? I wasn't going to add any additional conditions beyond the ASCC conditions.
Okay, so I guess I have a question for Nicholas and Ian. I don't want to get in front of you, but my specific question is, since these changes have been offered and baked into a new application.
Right.
Are we going to require them to be included, or are we going to require them to be considered, which is what the ASCC did?
Good point.
So that's, that's the difference. And I would think that after all of this, at a minimum, we would want those conditions to to apply, not the consideration of them, but for them to be carried out. So I don't know, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but that's what I think we need to decide. And Nicholas, I don't mean to characterize your intent, but
So I could go with that, Judith. I'm just, from a structural procedural perspective, since they have to go back to the ASCC, what if they don't like them? Then does it come back to us?
It's a good question.
I agree. I agree with your point. Yeah, I would go with that, except have we complicated it even further by adding that stipulation in?
So and this is your, your meeting, and we're kind of off-roading it. So I'm going to defer to how you want to, how you want to proceed. If this is a clarification of what I said, I'm happy to clarify what I said if you want to do this when we're making
I'm fine with this. Go ahead and clarify Judith's question. I think it's a good one. Do we say with these conditions? I mean, if we deny the appeal, will it be with these conditions? Or I understood that the ASCC recommended these things, but didn't require them the, looking at the plate heights or the height and the colors, I think it was. There was some step where they were going to have just two members of the ASCC look over what happened, right?
That's, that's right, if I may. So my proposal was to adopt the modifications as a modification to the existing matter that came to us, rather than viewing this as a new application. If this were a new application, then the appropriate place for it to be would be a withdrawal of the prior application and start back to the ASCC. And I we wouldn't have just done what we have for the last four hours. If that were the case. So I would, my proposal was to condition the existing applications upon the modifications that are proposed by the applicant as a condition of approval. But to leave the two-person review for consistency from the, with the ASCC as they had, as they had proposed. So that was, you know, if I were going to make a motion, which this is not the right time to do it, that would be what I would do. And Judith, if I can, let me know if you need me to be sharper than that.
No, that's clearer. Thank you.
So what would the options of the ASCC be at that point, Nicholas?
I don't see that the ASCC as a body has a
The two members of the ASCC there.
So they're frequently, and if either the planning director or the town attorney want to clarify the practice that we have in the town of the subsequent shepherding by members of the ASCC.
That was it?
That's to say, Laura, would you, would you like to talk about the practice, or I can, I can do my best talking about?
Let me clarify my question there. It's like, if we were to move forward with your proposal, Nicholas?
Yes.
Okay, we deny the appeal. Right. The additional condition is they adhere to the modifications that have already occurred. Then the, we have two members of the ASCC that get to look at that.
Right.
And what do they get to decide? Yea or nay, or additional modifications, or how does it flow from there?
Planning director, what is the practice of our two ASCC friends?
So they have two different roles. Sometimes there are specific conditions that require an action. An example would be reduce the lighting on the driveway. And then those two ASCC members would look to see if that lighting is sufficiently reduced. The other example is this language where the applicant should consider something. So there's more discretion involved in evaluating how something has been considered. So if this body wants to add those, if this body wants to approve the revised plans from Friday that were shown by the applicant to the planning commission tonight, then it would be helpful for us for implementation to know what you would want those two ASCC members to look at. For example, the final planting plan would be something that I think would be appropriate. And so it might be the final roof plan, the final colors and materials, and the final planting plan. Just to make sure that, that those items are consistent with, you know, their, their normal practices in their discussion. I don't know if that's helpful. This is a little bit of a tricky situation.
I think that is helpful.
Yes.
Because it can be, it's a, it's a further implementation phase, providing direction to staff or providing advice to staff. So I think
Sorry, when all was said and done, the ASCC approved it. But they asked them to consider these other items. We are adding the condition that they actually implement the items that they proposed.
And the exact implementation, the exact implementation, like the, the exact plants and the location of those plants would be subject to two ASCC members' review.
Yes, got it. Okay. I'm clear.
Okay, and how about, you know, it might be the fourth wheel, extra wheel. And let me give my overview, just so the parties know. And then we can figure out what our conclusion or official plan is. I did think the House is well-sighted, given all the constraints and appreciate that the fire truck constraint is quite something to work around. I'm actually glad it's not so visible from Servantes and Westbridge. I think it could have been a lot more you know, a different plan could have been a lot more visible from those roads. So I'm glad about that. I did go to the neighbor's house and looked at the view from there. You know, it's kind of tricky. There's a page, red page 10 in our, in the handout has the view thing. And I, you know, it says there that prevents the obstruction of views of adjacent property owners. But I frequently use this, the way these lines are that the house that's getting built, I mean, getting, that's already existing. This new house in the thing that says what's okay, it's in the view, you know, the line goes over here. So it's good the house isn't right there. But even the guidelines say, you know, as long as it doesn't, I mean, a little chop off the view is kind of, I don't want to say okay, but it's, it's what the picture of the example of how you should do it is. So I don't think it's reasonable that a new house that gets built has no impact on other houses and views. And I do think that plants properly put will, you know, the neighbors won't even see the house after a while. I like the changes that the project team has made, like lowering the roof a little and adding these plants. And I actually think it's decent of them to put the plants well into their yard. I mean, another choice is to put the, most people stick the plants, you know, at their property line so that the, the new house gets the most view of a meadow or thing. So I think that's actually decent and nice. I agree with Judith. I'm sad that we're here. And I would, I guess I'd like staff and ASCC to maybe review the criteria for deciding if it's going to be a if a project's going to have a preliminary review or not. Maybe shift the line to have, have a few more. I don't want, you know, I'm sympathetic though to not making things, just putting extra, extra steps for everybody. I know we're Portola Valley and we love to have meetings. We love to have everybody talk, but I do want to push back a little just how many meetings we have and how much time we spend. I think for applicants, it can be just really feel onerous after a while. So I don't want to do that. So I'm basically in favor of upholding the ASCC's decision, the place my fellow commissioners were going with maybe codifying the changes that have already been incorporated. Sounds, sounds good to me, so.
Ian, is it okay if I just amplify one point you just raised? Please, in terms of meetings, my hope would be to get a process, revisit the process in a way that you know, even if it's one, one more step, it's at a point where you avoid delays because there is a different viewpoint or different level of understanding later. So I'm not, I'm not sure more more meetings early necessarily translate to a more difficult process. And I would hope that we can be thoughtful about that as well.
Yeah, I agree. Good point. Good. So how about I'll entertain a motion if somebody thinks they can state clearly what we're what we're aiming at.
Through the chair. One way to think about this is there is a attached resolution. So that would be the action. So the motion is to adopt the resolution and then attachment to, to the staff report or the recommended conditions of approval. And the change would be to condition number one. And just changing the language in condition number one to require the applicant to implement all three of those suggestions from the ASCC, subject to approval by two ASCC members.
Oh, perfect. And can you tell me what red page that's on?
Looks like 24.
Yeah, perfect. Okay, no, that's a great suggestion. I would
I'd make a motion to approve the resolution, resolution on red page 24, subject to the changes of actually implementing the subject to the changes of actually implementing the three conditions, changes as proposed to the plan, subject to the review of the two ASCC members.
Great. And just a clarification, the resolution's really on page 19.
And then it was Page 19, yes. Friendly amendment. Did that cover it, Laura?
Um, yes, I believe that'll cover it.
Okay, that should cover it.
Do I hear a second? Can I, I can second it, right?
So the reason why I I'm not seconding it is I don't know what it means, subject to the review. I thought that we were adopting the, we were conditioning the approval upon the implementation of the modifications as proposed by applicant with ASCC advice and recommendations to staff with respect to subsequent implementing documents.
And that is a friendly amendment.
And, and, and and if that's now the motion, I would second that.
Can I get, John, do you mind restating the amendment?
Okay, Nicholas, how about you help me on that? To get the wording right. So I, I think I said what you said, but obviously you thought, I didn't quite say it, and I totally agree with that. So we are moving forward with the resolution on red page 19. But we are requiring that the currently submitted amendments to the plan be implemented. And that the ASCC has a chance to comment on those implementations?
And the two members of the ASCC.
The two members of the ASCC have a chance to comment on the implementations.
Would provide advice and recommendation to staff on the implementation of subsequent planning, subsequent documents.
Excellent.
Instruction.
Excellent. Friendly amendment accepted.
Planning Directors, do you have what you need by that? Or if you would like to restate it? Kara, here you are. Ta-da, here's the town attorney. Town Attorney, do you want to restate this for us?
Yeah. Um, so I'm happy to restate. I think the issue is what type of review are the two ASCC members conducting? And as I understand the motion, it is to adopt the modified plans and have the ASCC members review the final planting plan, the final
Roof.
Roof line and
Color palette.
And color palette to determine whether they meet the three objectives stated by the ASCC.
To provide direction to staff or advice to staff on the adoption. I don't think that there is any further decision-making on the part of the ASCC. I think that there's guidance that the ASCC can provide. I think we're looking for something more akin to finality. Here. At least I'm looking for something closer to finality. And I trust that ASCC and staff will, the two members, the ASCC and staff will work it out. But I don't, I'm not looking for another appealable issue to, to come up.
So then the motion is to adopt the the modified plans and to have the ASCC two-member body review the final planting plans, roof structure and color palette.
And provide recommendations to staff.
And provide recommendations to staff.
Town Attorney, thank you very much. Lawyers are wonderful. I appreciate it.
I won't go that far. Come on.
All right, guys. So, so I think we've got a motion and we've got a second.
But is there any further discussion from the commission? I think we'll do roll call vote on this one.
Commissioner Haskell?
Aye.
Commissioner Tark?
Aye.
Vice Chair Golden?
Aye.
Chair Kofso?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, everyone. This closes out this agenda item. Everybody's welcome to stay, of course. Our next ones are commission reports from our commissioners and then staff reports for our last item.
But don't feel pressure to stay.
Right.
Right.
Right. So commissioners, does anybody have a report?
No reports.
No reports, okay. So I think we'll go to staff reports. Laura?
Um, this is a little bit of a repeat, but it's important. We talked about it just to touch on oral communications related to the housing element. Staff is working with the council subcommittee of the mayor and the vice mayor to make final decisions to a couple of items in the housing element. The council directed us to have some conversations with the horse operator at Glen Oaks as well as with the property owner, Stanford. And then they also asked us to make some changes to the opt-in program to further restrict opt-in. And then we've got minor corrections, typos, small things that have been submitted by some of you and members of the public. And then we're making those small changes now. Then the council subcommittee will review it and then we'll be sending off that whole package to HCD. We expect that to happen in the next few days. And then as soon as we send it off, we'll post the housing element to the website and we'll put out a broad distribution email to all of our lists and everyone who signed up and asked to be involved to give them that update. And then the ad hoc housing element committee, we are planning on having a meeting on, let me get it right here, August 15th, which will be an update to that committee, talking about their roles going forward and providing them newer information about the exact timing of the HCD review process and what we can expect in the review process now that some cities in San Mateo County are in the middle of it. They're a little bit ahead of us. So that will be the substance of that upcoming meeting. So that's the update on the housing element. And then also the planning commission is aware that there is another piece of work related to implementing zoning code amendments that go with the housing element. And we're going into contract with that consultant on the next council agenda. And then we'll be back to give the planning commission more information about your role in that zoning code amendment process. So more is to come on that as we start to finalize some of the details.
Laura, yeah. I have a question. If that's okay, Anne?
Yes, yes, please.
Okay, um, I was a little confused on the process on where you are with Glen Oaks and then the opt-in. What's going to have, like, is the public going to see what goes into the HCD submission beforehand? And what was the outcome of the discussion around those points? It, I, I think it's important for people to understand exactly what's being submitted, but I don't see, maybe I missed it, a step in the process where we get visibility into that before it goes to HCD.
Um, the council decided that that final step would happen with the council subcommittee and staff. So we're working on those final steps right now that the council requested. And then we'll put out a communication that explains what steps are happening so that people know what just happened. But it won't be prior to the housing element going to HCD for the council's direction.
So for example, Glen Oaks will not know whether it's on the rezoning before that submission goes in.
Um, they will not know in advance. All, we'll put out a bunch of communications all at the same time. They will not know in advance.
Wow. Okay, thank you.
Hey, Laura, so are we expecting the zoning work to be significant on our part of the planning commission? I know it'll be a lot of work for the consultants, but what do you, what do you think is going to happen for us?
Um, I think it will be significant. The zoning work is going to happen in two phases. The basic zoning requirements will be happening kind of this fall and so that we can get things adopted by early 2023. And that will include like the base zoning, like for the new districts. So think about things like setback and height and floor area. So those things, a lot of that work will be with the planning commission. And then there'll be another phase in early 2023 where we're going to come back and look at some more detailed design-related items that is often called a form-based code where, or an objective design standards where we're going to add another layer of requirements so that we can do our best to ensure the quality development. And so we're doing that later to make sure that we have enough time to finish this phase we have to do by January. So the planning commission will have a role in both of those phases.
Thank you.
And if I can ask, presumably we're also going to be looking at the general plan amendments. It said at the same time, it says this whole little ripple effect that's going to end up going through.
Correct. And then The process is going to be a little different, but yes, the planning commission will have an important role in in that process as well.
Are we presumably looking at the GPPs first? Before we
We probably have to start on some of the zoning code work, some of the earlier work first in terms of the timing to get everything done, but we're still working on how that scheduling is going to work out.
We're also going to be receiving the fire safety evacuation data or reports coming up presumably at, at, at some point in the intermediate near future.
The evacuation study that the town is overseeing is going to council next week on August 10th. So the part that's within the town's purview is going forward week. And then the part that's within the fire district purview for their mapping and their studies are on their schedule, but we expect that to be later in the year. At least the first part will be later this year.
So prior to making decisions, presumably.
That's the hope.
And then we also have a sequo process that we're presumably running at the same time.
That's correct.
You don't have nearly enough to do.
Yeah, it's a lot. It's a lot to figure out with the final timing, for sure.
I, I believe that. And I want to leave it alone. Okay.
Okay, and am I right? We take public comments on the staff reports. Is that right?
Yes, please.
Okay, so we're going to open it up to the public. I see Rita's hand up. Go ahead, Rita.
Hi, there. I'm, I'm a little surprised and a little disappointed after listening to majority of this meeting tonight about how people need to work together and communicate together. And there was a meeting earlier this week that basically said the same thing. But then the housing element that I read in the paper that was being sent on to HCD, and I guess after this evening, it's not being sent on, it's still being in subcommittee. But it's just going to move forward without the residents' comments on that. And Glen Oaks won't know until they read about it, similar to the residents that were upzoned and saw their address on a map without being contacted first. So I'm, I'm just a little surprised after listening to a meeting tonight, a long meeting, it's 10:07 now, about communicating with our neighbors and being nice with each other to have this just bypass the residents for the final say on this particular important document for our town, which is going to change our town. And, and it's going to move forward. I just wanted to say that out loud.
Thanks, Rita. Next, we have Caroline Vertonghen.
And just like Rita, I'm very surprised by Laura's comments. And I'm very disappointed. This is not the process that we used to in Portola Valley. Obviously, that process has changed. It has changed behind our back, and it's not right. I am still seeking all the guidelines about SEQA before you change them. And nobody seems to have clear answers to that. Again, we're not used to that. Again, a change in process and we don't like it. Thank you.
Uh, let's see, next is David Cardinal.
Thanks, Nominuted. I just want to say, I think the process has been amazing. And if there is anyone in this town who thinks that their voice has not been heard in one of the dozens of meetings we've had, then they haven't been paying attention, or they've never raised their hand, or they've never written an email, or they've never paid any attention at all. I, I just think it's, no, we, we've listened to everybody. And whatever decisions the commissions make are not going to make everybody happy. Not going to make me totally happy or anybody else. But to say that this is some sort of weird, non-transparent 1984-ish thing is just insane. I mean, we, we let everybody have their voice hours and hours and hours, including a couple of minutes from me, I guess, tonight. And we couldn't do any better. So I, I don't see, if, if anybody hasn't, a person who hasn't been heard, then let them be heard. But they've, they've had infinite opportunities. Thank you.
Thanks, Dave. Next is Kristy Corley.
Thank you. This has been a long meeting, learning a lot. Two comments from previously, it's my understanding that the Conservation Committee is the expert on trees. So I'd like to see them brought into the process if possible. I also like the pre-preliminary review. I've gone to many where we walk a site and then we walk the circular site around the site. And I think all the neighbors deserve that if, if possible. So if we could build that into the process, I've gone to lots of meetings where it's been said that that should be done. And the process still surprises people, especially when they need to learn the whole process. Then regarding the housing element, it was not our understanding that we would not get to be able to have input on what the standards would be for opt-in. So I've sent three ideas without response. Those ideas are, you know, possibly the person owns the property for three years prior to opting in, then we Uh, then, uh, we go off a SB nine rules where they can't buy two, uh, lots next to each other. And that if you do four units, that one, the person doing it has to own, uh, be in one of the units for three years. Also, we have historical and we have, um, indigenous, uh, findings and so on in SB nine that they spent many, many months putting in. And I encourage you to read SB nine inside and out and add what you can to that. Um, it is not my understanding that we decided on exactly the buffer unless you're going with twenty-one percent across the board. I used to hear that you were possibly varying the buffer percentage depending on the level of affordability. Uh, and I'm not clear what the final decision is there. I, I know often people were brought together for their ideas and I ask you to bring, uh, regular residents together for our ideas. Uh, but I have not heard that response and I, I appreciate all the, um, effort that is being put into this. We're towards the end of the process. I realize everybody's working hard, but do slow down for the, um, residents to feel heard, um, because we've been a proud of, part of the process all the way along. And this last step feels real rushed to me. Um, Glen Oaks, uh, is also of interest. We don't know a lot about it. We can only see it from the road. We're, uh, need more information about Glen Oaks. I now know it's twenty acres and it has, you know, twelve hundred, uh, letters came in and I'm interested in, in seeing what those people have to say because I'm not, my sport is, uh, more of softball and not horses. So I interested in learning more about that. Thanks for listening.
Thanks, Christie. Okay, I see no more hands, so we'll wrap that up.
Um, just one, one other thing to add, um, in response to those, um, comments from the chair. Um, so the council did, um, direct staff to reduce the buffer and look at different ways of, um, addressing the buffer. And so that will likely result in a, um, decrease in the density at Glen Oaks. But we're still working on those numbers and we're still working on those details. But I just wanted to mention that, um, part, uh, to the commission and to the panel.
Hey, if I may, Chair?
Um, okay, uh, just briefly.
Briefly, uh, are we submitting it? What is the document that we're submitting to, uh, HCD? Is this the final document that we're submitting?
I'm, I'm sorry, we're submitting a, the draft to HCD. What do you mean by final document? The final document.
So it's a draft. So what happens after that? Is there further discussion? Uh, does it come back to this body? Does it come back to, uh, are there opportunities for people to comment on it?
Yeah, there'll be a whole nother set, um, of meetings that the public will have an opportunity to comment on. So after we receive comments back from HCD, we'll reconvene, um, the housing element committee, um, to respond to those comments. Um, look at any policy issues that need to be amended. So those will be public meetings. Then it'll come back through this body for a public meeting and then it'll go to council, um, for a public meeting. So that's assuming, um, that, you know, we don't have really drastic changes, um, that are required by HCD. So that'll be happening. Um, it'll be a ninety-day review period. So it'll be back in front of the housing element committee, um, in about three months. And then in front of this body and back in front of council. And we'll start, you know, when we're in that phase, we'll do all of that outreach again. We'll notify everybody. We'll let everybody know about all the meetings and everyone can participate in the revisions to the housing element.
Okay, thank you.
And I just have a quick question. Um, when, after the HCD document is submitted, is there going to be a time point at which the public can't understand the basis of the more recent changes that it will not have had an opportunity to review in final form before submission? I know it's still a draft, but from my point of view, you're never going to get certain types of changes once it goes in. And so I think it's going to be important for people to understand what happened and why in the last set of non, non-discut, non-publicly discussed steps. So is that possible or is that planned?
Um, well, at the next housing element committee, we'll be giving, um, a, a report and talking about what the changes were, what happened since the council reviewed it, um, what happens next. We'll have some kind of graphic or table with what the policy changes were and why. So that stuff will happen at the next housing element committee meeting.
So that's the time to tune in to get that information. Thank you.
Yeah.
But, but my assumption would be Judith, that, you know, we've kind of pushed things out and delayed things enough that those later reviews are going to be kind of far and few between. You know, cause we kept delaying when we were actually making the decision as to what we're actually going to turn in. So it keeps compressing the end of the schedule. Would be my guess. I mean, I know they'll try to give us some info, but, you know, we've kind of compressed it a lot.
I'm not quite sure what you think my, my concern is. What I was wanting is to make sure that the public had a chance to understand the basis. And that sounds like it will happen because that's very important. These people are going to have to live with it and, and that's, I'm not arguing about the overall process or steps or delays or anything like that. I, I just wanted to make sure that there would be a publicly disclosed rationale and framework so that people could understand.
Yes, it's coming at the, um, August fifteenth ad hoc housing element committee meeting.
Okay, got it.
Okay, thanks, everyone. Um, shall we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Great. All in favor?
Aye.
Great. Thanks. Oh, is it okay to ask what, uh, are we having a meeting in two weeks? Let's see. What is today?
Um, I do not anticipate having a meeting on August seventeenth. I anticipate the planning commission meeting being canceled unless something, um, comes up that doesn't, that I'm not aware of right now.
Okay. So I'll see you all maybe in a month. Okay.
Thank you.
Bye, everybody. Thanks.
Thanks, everyone. Good night.
Lauren, Cara.